Well, welcome. I think we can get, we all, we're here. Clint is not gonna make it today. So, good morning, everyone. We have lots of folks in our, in our audience. So, welcome to all of you. Welcome to all of our board members. We have some new faces today, which we're gonna formally get introduced to. And I'm just so grateful to see all of my colleagues. I really do. It's not often that you say, "Gosh, I'm really looking forward to this meeting." But I really do so value our thought together. And as we'll talk about later in our meeting, I had an opportunity to spend time with many of you at national conferences past months. So, it's great to see all of you again. All right. And we also want to be sure, I think, potentially Rod, our USB liaison, Mr. Rod Hall is online. So, welcome to you as well. We're gonna begin with our pledge of allegiance. Our vice chair.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, and we have a board member thought today from our, of our new members. Member Hutchins, please.
Thank you. So, I, when I was asked to give the thought, I immediately thought of a poem. And it's actually a poem that I thought came to mind in our last meeting. And so, I was actually, I had thought in our last meeting, if I'm asked to give the thought, this is what I wanna share. So, I was, I was happy to have this opportunity. And so, the poem, you've probably heard it, but it's a good one. So, it's called "A Builder or a Wrecker." "I watched them tearing a building down, a gang of men in a busy town. With a ho-heep-ho and a lusty yell, they swung a beam and a cycle. I asked the foreman, 'Are these men skilled, the men you've hired, if you had to build?'" He gave me a laugh and he said, "No, indeed. Just common labor is all I mean. I can easily reckon a day or two what builders have taken a year to do." And I thought to myself, as I went my way, which of these two roles have I tried to play? Am I a builder who works with care, measuring life by the rule and square? Am I shaping my deeds by a well-made plan, patiently doing the best I can? Or am I a wrecker who walks the town content with the labor of tearing down?" And so, I, I've been involved in a few different organizations. I've been very blessed. I have been involved in a couple organizations that had some great builders, but also some wreckers. And it just makes the business that work so hard. And what, why, why this poem came to mind in my, in the last meeting is that my experience with charter schools, and in particular with charter school leaders and supporters in Utah is that we are builders. We have the mindset to build, enhance, improve, and innovate with a solid focus on helping students learn and succeed. I am proud to now be a member of a board that has no other agenda but to elevate learning and provide unmatched opportunities to youth in our state. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think about that. I've been really thinking about that. As you know, I'm a teacher at Weaver State. We've had a very interesting last couple weeks, and there's been lots of conversations in really thinking about our, my role there, but even more so than in just, like you mentioned, our thinking about here and our work on this board and heading into a legislative season, which we'll get to hear about in our committee reports today, too. But we're so grateful that you bring that building sense of purpose and attitude to our. Thank you. And thanks for being willing to dive in and give a board member thought right off. We do like, if you wouldn't mind sharing that with Amy, we'll make sure that we try to share those with our larger charter school community. They're really helpful.
Sure.
Thanks. Okay, we don't have any public comment today. So, we're gonna go ahead and move on to our consent calendar. This has our October board meeting minutes, which we definitely need to recommend for approval. And is recommended for approval, our financial report, which is recommended for approval, our Utah Land Trust program feedback. And the state charter school board finance committee recommends no change to base funding or board rule at this time, citing disproportionate impact on smaller schools. And this is recommended feedback to the school land trust team. We probably had Paula Plant and her team here a few meetings ago. We also included in this consent calendar is charter agreement updates recommended for approval, specifically, which was Mountain Heights Academy, Providence Hall Charter School, Thomas Edison Charter School, and Wallace Stegner Academy. So, with that, I could entertain a motion to approve our consent calendar.
We've got motion. And to approve the consent calendar as it's presented.
Awesome. Thank you. Oh, yes, please. That would be, that would be, that would be beneficial. Thank you. Feel free to. Are you comfortable with that? I know where it is. Okay. Excellent. Okay. So, thank you so, thank you so much. So, Member Marshall, who is new, we will get a formal introduction here in a minute, but is gonna recuse himself from that vote. So, thank you so much. Okay, so we had a motion from Member Bassett. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Thank you. From Member Pulsover. And any comment for discussion? Okay, great. Can we get a vote? Call those in favor. Say aye. Put your hand.
Aye.
Okay, great. Consent calendar passes. And I also saw Rod Hall came on in. Welcome. I give you a shout out. I want to actually go praise it all, and we're just glad you're able to be here today. So, welcome. Okay, so I'm really, we're so humbled and excited to be at this point in our meeting. And I'm glad we're doing this really at the beginning. We have two new board members that we are swearing in today. Not only are we excited because this completes our, I mean, allows us to do the work that we would like to do as builders, but we're also welcoming members with incredible expertise and knowledge that I think is going to really add to, just to the, to the positive power that we have as board. With that, I'm just gonna read some notes. I don't wanna miss anything. So, please, I'm so glad I have Marie here by my side. We have Dr. Nye today, which I'm, again, so honored. Thank you for taking time out of your day to be here today. We'll be swearing in our new board members, Stacy Hutchins and Nathan Marshall. Stacy is a third-generation educator with a passion for innovation, which we've already had a chance to hear, beginning her career teaching history and Spanish before serving as the head of school at the Utah Virtual Academy. She currently directs Career Path High School, a blended competency-based charter school, and has significant policy experience, including serving on the Utah Board, State Board of Education, and numerous education and community committees. As an alumna of BYU and the University of Utah and WGU, Stacy enjoys family time, particularly cheering on her four children in figure skating and the drum corps. I'm excited to learn more about that. And Nathan Marshall, originally from Springville, Utah earned his undergraduate biology degree from BYU. You have a comment before pursuing graduate studies in evolutionary biology and bioinformatics. His career began in 2007, teaching biology at Carl G. Mazer Preparatory Academy, where he later took on the roles as athletic director and assistant headmaster, simultaneously completing a master's in educational leadership at BYU. I know how challenging that is. Since 2013, Marshall has served at Providence Hall, initially as high school principal, and since 2020 as the executive director, overseeing all three campuses and is eager to support Utah's charter school system. Again, we are so welcome. Dr. Nye, if you could please come on up. And Marie, if you could support me a little bit in this as well. And Stacy, Nathan, if you could please come on up. Andrea as well. I'm not sure. I'm, well, this is my first time doing this. So, I'm full transparency. I'm like, Brian Bowles, I'm gonna say.
So, first and foremost, thank you. As you know, state laws are very clear. Chapter fifty, or Title Fifty-three G, Chapter Five, Second Bill, designates the governor to appoint the state charter school board upon the advice and consent of the Senate. And so, the governor expresses his sincere gratitude for your service and your leadership in creating conditions and setting the stage for, and supporting the systems that maximize the outcomes for our students across our state. So, thank you. Should we begin with Ms. Hutchins?
Yes, that would be wonderful.
I state your name.
I, Stacy Hutchins.
Having been appointed to the state charter school board.
Having been appointed to the state charter school board.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Utah.
Constitution of the state.
That I will discharge the duties of my office.
I will discharge the duties of my office. I'm thinking, I joined the board in COVID, and so are this did not look like this for me. Yes. Oh, great. Okay, great. Yeah, great. And.
I state your name.
I, Nathan Marshall.
Having been appointed to the state charter school board.
Having been appointed to the state charter school board.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Utah.
Constitution of the state.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
Will discharge the duties of my office.
Thank you, Paul. And I was thinking, well, I don't know who started that, but that was wonderful to bring that sense of joy really to this work and appreciation and us to do as well. Thank you so much. Your time and being here. So, I appreciate you and your passion and energy for education.
You're a dear mother.
Thank you so much. Sure. Could we get one with every, with every, the whole year? Oh, you know, so, I know, I should, but can we get a photo with everyone? That would be, that would be great. Oh, please. Our board and your new members and. Darren, if you'd like to join us. Come on in. Why not? You're a part of us. And let's, we might need to.
Yeah, get closer like.
Yes, please switch together.
I'm sure.
I'm being moved to.
Yeah, two rows.
Great. Let's see. I know, I wear a little. Pushing, great. I just have to break down. Awesome. Thank you. Again, thank you all so much. Everyone, well, come on back. Wonderful. And thank you.
We're directed for a child.
Perfect. Thank you all so much for coming. I'll take a picture of you. Yes, I love that. See here, I didn't know. I thought, you know, I was like, oh, are they, are we promoted comments? Definitely. He's my partner. I love that. We should all have an entourage. Thank you all so much for coming.
Goes through.
Excellent. That was fun.
I know. These are, these are.
Great. I think we can, right, well, we're just almost done. And it is really such an honor and an opportunity for us to do this work together. As we're wrapping up, you will notice we do not have executive director clear with us today. He is, his son is getting married this weekend. We actually have, and that's my member B singer, not, his son is not getting married, but his son is returning home from a mission today. So, we have lots of wonderful family energy and just happenings with our board. So, with that, though, we're very excited that associate director Stephenson could really not necessarily step into his place, but because you hold your own place, let me, let me share that. It really provides us the report and provide us direction for our meeting today. Oh, 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 my shirt. Yes, I missed. Thank you. Isn't that wonderful? I'm so glad that. I shared. I did. I just jumping around. Yes. Let's, we back up. We need, we have another intervention that we need to do. So, thanks. We have, and I asked our assistant attorney general to join us in our picture. We are pleased to announce that we have a new AAG, Darren Goff. And we also want to give a big thank you to our former AAG Kurt Bradburn, who had, I mean, just the wealth of advice and knowledge and support from these individuals is, is we can't really put in towards. And we're so grateful. And so, Darren, welcome. And would you like to just share a, just a brief, a little bit, what you're hoping to bring to the board?
Great. Thank you. I'm, I'm super happy to be here today. I'm thrilled to be taking on this assignment. By, by way of background, I have been practicing law since 1993. That included thirteen years of legal practice in Alaska. And then, I've been in Utah since 2007. My, my background is primarily in litigation. I came from the litigation division, where I was the section director for the civil rights section, and litigated primarily education-related civil rights cases over the past eleven years, both higher ed and at the public ed level and charter school level. So, I, I come to this with a lot of knowledge about how to litigate, for example, a Title IX case or an ADA case or a Title VI case. And we'll be trying to gain experience and beef up on my parliamentary procedure and administrative law. The idea that I'm in here with, with all of you, and then we're all, you know, engaged in a common purpose. It's a lot different than being in litigation, where the person on the other side of the table is effectively trying to kill me. So, that would be, I'm really looking forward to that. I also want to mention, you know, emphasize that I am the division director for the, for the education division. I'm not simply the, a line attorney there. What that means is I can bring to bear on most problems, all of the experience in the education division. And one of my, my primary goals as division director is going to be to make the education division a, a unit that represents all of our clients together. And it's not that, you know, well, let me call mine A G. No, they're calling the education division. And I have an entire battalion of lawyers that I can solve with in this problem. And that's, I'm really looking forward to, to doing that. So, I've already worked a little bit with Dr. Kramer, just to sort of put this on the last two weeks. You know, good experience starting out. I want to make, make it clear that I'm available to, to the, to the board and to your staff whenever you have questions. And I'll do my best to get on top of it and answer quickly. I apologize that I'm not double booked, but triple booked today. I sent my secretary an email last night and said, you know, we have to do something about this calendar. It's an absolute problem. She, she said, well, why don't you just hand it over to me? I'm like, well, I suppose I can let something go. To make that work. But anyway, I'm super happy to be here. Really looking forward to it. I'll be at your next meeting for the entire day, and I'm really looking forward to working with all of you. It's gonna be a great experience.
Wonderful. Well, we're, again, thank you so much for being here. I thank you for sharing more about, you'll continue to get to know us definitely over the several meetings. And also, too, as I was thinking, Member Hutchins had an opportunity to share a few words at a previous meeting. Member Marshall, not to necessarily put you on the spot, but I, I kind of spoke for you in that introduction. If there was anything also that you would like to share, just joining our board, I'd love to give you a moment as well.
Yeah, I'm just really excited about this opportunity. My educational journey has always been in the charter space, and I am just super passionate about what charters can bring to the educational space. And, you know, in serving in different capacities, from a teacher to an administrator, and hopefully provide some guidance and, and direction in this capacity. I, I just, Utah is such a great place. And to be able to have, you know, the charter opportunity, your school choice in this environment is really, really important. And I'm still honored and blessed to be able to be a part of that conversation.
So, welcome, welcome again. You know, I feel a little like out of sorts this morning. Why? I don't even have my tea out or, but I'm just, I know, I feel like, I know, it's in my bag still. That's what I need. I just feel, you know, I don't know. I'm feeling excited. It's just been a great meeting so far. We're just so, just excited to welcome all new faces. And, and at a time, too, where I think a lot of the conversation, I know my social media feeds are filled about gratitude as we're in this time and space, and also thinking about our member thought as we started. I really am filled with gratitude to all of you. And again, I know I started the meeting this way, but I, I really do enjoy our time together because I feel like it's a place in my life where I can make an impact. And I think we've heard all of, all of you share that. So, I guess it's time to get down to business or bigger, or that was the biggest business of the day. I mean, I turn it over to you, associate director, and for the director report. You know, I've got electrolytes today. I'm trying to. Clear myself.
Oh, that's great. Thank you. Yes, and as mentioned, you know, Dr. Kramer is, you know, with his family this week, and so send those well wishes his day. But he's certainly been involved in, you know, helping to create our director's report and, you know, very involved, of course, with our team. And we're excited to just share what we've all been up to this last month. So, following our typical reporting structure, we'll be sharing what are our board updates, our team updates, our goal updates, and then things that are upcoming, as well as some of the events. So, starting out with board updates, as was noted earlier, we now have all of our seats filled. That is so exciting. So, we've been looking forward to today. We've also been working to put together some orientation materials for these new board members. And so, that's a project that Dr. Kramer and I will be engaging in with them over the next few weeks. You'll probably hear a little bit more about that as we get to our board committee reports. But just looking forward to deeply engaging with all of our board members as we have all of the seats filled. Also, as our board has requested to have all of our staff reporting more as they, as our staff engages in their work. We have more of our staff reporting at board meetings, and you'll see that reflected today. And then, we will plan to continue that, giving our staff opportunities to share about the work that they're engaged in, and just giving you also that chance for to get to know them, and also to be able to ask questions. And, you know, just having our, our whole team, as Jim and Mary shared in our session last month. Our staff is our team, and, and so really just helping to, to build that, that team unity of the work that we do as the state charter school board. So, looking at our team, what have we been working on specifically? We've been continuing our training with ONIX. That's within that EOS system that we have been engaged in this year. Two of the big, I guess, hurrah accomplishments are that we now have regular team meetings occurring. And through those, we've been able to work completely through three issues, all the way through full resolution, using that IDS system that I believe Dr. Kramer introduced last month in his team update. We've also now been able to have scheduled executive team meetings. Of course, we're also just a phone caller or text away when sometimes, you know, an issue comes up that we need to chat about urgently. But those scheduled meetings have also really allowed a lot more strategy and focus to be spent in the work that Dr. Kramer and I get to engage in. Our team does have some homework that we're working on right now from ONIX as we engage in that EOS system. Right now, we're going through all of the tasks and responsibilities of each of our ten teammates and making sure that that's all clarified, and if there's any overlap, that we know where that is, and trying to really delegate those tasks and responsibilities for each member of our team. We're also working to come up with measurable reporting numbers for each person that then we can track each week or every few weeks, just showing the, the good work that they're doing. And then also coming up with an IDS tracking system. So, as we continue to work through issues, but then we would have tracking and accountability within that. Moving to our goal update, we still have those two goals that the board has selected for Dr. Kramer, which is that first one, which is implementing that EOS system, and then developing that executive director evaluation system, which is aligned with some of the work from the National Charter School Institute. That second goal is that we're implementing that accountability framework of a focus on supporting affiliate governance. And then, as we've suggested, there would be a few additional goals. That big hairy, uh, day school. There's a copy at each of your spots of the report that's in the National Charter School Institute. Ain't it a little late? So, we will make sure that gets posted to public meeting notice. So, we want to make sure, you know, we've got twenty-four hour notice. So, we don't get that posted out there. But we've got it here. We'll be discussing that later today around, until one o'clock. But that is the full report. It has just some recommendations, some of their thoughts towards goals. Starts on page four. One of these two possible strategic goals, as well as some potential next steps, you can use on page five. So, perhaps a break today, or during lunch. Have a break today or during lunch, uh a chance to take a look at that. Um so we will continue that uh conversation. Um when we uh hopefully there'll be um some additional updates uh with these goals uh as we move them into December. Um so then that brings us to our last two uh pieces of uh update, I guess, in our executive director quote. And the fourth one would be that upcoming items, making sure it's on everyone's radar that our new school applications are coming in. Um we did adjust that due date uh by a few weeks since we pushed our proposals to September instead of August. And so those are currently due on the fifteenth. Uh and so that is Saturday for anyone who's tracking that. Um so they are coming up fast. Um and uh our staff member Betty Comminets uh is leading that process right now. And um so within that uh week to ten days after, uh she will be reviewing them and then. Uh preparing them to be sent to you. So you'll have time to um review those. Hopefully, if you get a little downtime, maybe over Thanksgiving or uh holiday season, uh a chance to read through those. Um as a reminder, you have seven proposals that you invited to move forward into full applications. Um so just making sure you are. Timing yourself uh to read seven full applications uh ahead of our January one. Uh which is when uh those will be discussed. So that's our our biggest thing on the horizon uh right now. And then uh our sitting, our celebration, uh the biggest one we have right now, uh besides our full board, uh which we really can't help that. Right? Uh we just see that uh we are making progress with our IT developments. Uh we actually uh have had a a team now come in and uh look at our our setup here. Uh they've been meeting with uh the team at USBE. Uh they've been meeting with the team here that uh helps with their uh state. Um IT and infrastructure needs. They've been meeting with our team and uh getting all the different groups to to talk to each other. And looking at um what sort of uh integrations are going to be needed, how to migrate uh the different uh systems and connectivity. Um and so uh we expect uh continued progress within uh IT uh as we keep moving forward there. Let's just appreciate all the work uh of USBE and helping us to make that uh a seamless transition as we move forward there. Um and that concludes our Director's Reports. Uh Cheryl, turn it back to you and what if there's any questions, I'll address this.
Right, thank you so much. Uh any questions for Associate Director Stefan said, if there goes to anything you have to report. So, so with that, like this would be actually a wonderful like segue to. Uh our OSB liaison, we would like to provide a little time for you, uh Rod Hall. Would like to share some updates and insights just from your role on the state, uh the state um school board. I always want to throw in the charter, I know. Uh and and it just I feel, no, I'm feeling, I'm just giving everybody shout outs. I mean, really, it's um we're so uh grateful for what you bring to our board. Um and again, I know you're gonna be sharing some insights, but you really provide more than insight, more than insight. And uh we've just really appreciated getting to know you so much over these, really, it's been, I think, a almost a year. Uh and uh so um please take, please take some time to share.
Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to, and I'll just take a few minutes. Um but it has been, it's been a blessing to be able to to be together with this board. And and just watch you work and just see how you connect. Um and I I would love to bring some of that back to our board too as well. I think we have a great board. Uh we don't always, you know, sometimes our meetings will take twelve to fifteen hours. While we're trying to connect, you know, so it really means to see you got work together the way that we do. I really appreciate that. Um we have a lot of great things going on at State Board, especially with our new superintendent. Um stepping in her position, Dr. Molly Hart, she's done a great job and and our agency is really taken to her. Um and uh may- maybe some of you don't know this, but our board just finished our str- strategic plan. Uh which has been a huge help for our superintendent and also to our agency to kind of catch that vision to 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 begin to move it forward in the right direction. So I just I'll I'll just take a moment and tell you a couple of things to to keep an eye out for. They're coming uh down the pipe dealing with compliance specifically. One of them is R two seven seven one one four. And that is our rule that deals with how we uh deal with noncompliance at the board. So just and I'm not gonna go into all the details about it now, but as that's moving forward, it'll probably become before the full board in January. We would love your feedback and your insight. Um you know, a lot of times we 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 brought it back to committee specifically. Because we want more stakeholder input. And so we encourage you to take a look at that and because it affects everybody, right, all the way down to the the to the ground level. And then R two seven seven three two two, um it takes some time to 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 read into that. That is our 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 board rule that deals specifically with. Um code of conduct and it it addresses um those that are nonlicensed in the school. We know that UPA deals with all of our licensed educators, but we don't really have any way of tracking um people that are nonlicensed that work in the education space. And so this would give us uh in this rule, we would have the ability to be able to do that, especially when it comes to sexual misconduct. Um we you don't really have any way to track uh nonlicensed educators as they move from place to place. Um but concerning those things. So take a look at that. We would love any any input that you have there. One of the new, our newer rules, it's just that it's a revised rule, R two seven seven one two three, they're rolled out. It's how the 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 board deals with complaints. Um and in that rule specifically, it it addresses the law and it's been in law. Um that says that the school needs to have on their website a place where the public can go and share their grievances, they can complain. Uh share the things that they're concerned about. And there are, there were just a lot of schools that were not compliant there. So now that we've rolled, we we've rolled this out. And and schools are really scrambling to figure out how they can be compliant. I just wanna put it out there, please reach out to our internal audit department. We're we're here to help you through that process. Not to try to uh condemn anyone. We want to help everyone come to compliance on there. And one of the things that I would throw out is that you can have a hotline of your own. Um and I and I would actually encourage that. Um schools that have a hotline of their own where people can call and they can share those grievances directly with the school. And if that is, if if it and and that means if you have a hotline, you have to have a policy on how you're gonna, you're gonna, you know, um how you're gonna deal with those complaints when they come in. Um but if not, if that if there's too much on a school, they can just have a link on on their page that goes directly to our internal audit department where people can call. Show those things. So that's, those are some of the big things that we've we've put into place. We're working on some stuff for UPA and. Uh just stay plugged in, informed on what's happening there, because those are big things. We're kind of doing an overhaul with UPA and sifting through and. Just make it, just making sure that we understand how UPA runs. I mean, that's it's it's under the, it's under the authority of the board, but we only oversee about the last ten yards of it. So um we just, we just want to make sure that we really understand that process and what's happening with UPA, so. And I think that's, if anybody has any questions, I'd love to to answer those.
Is it more just of um the desire to refine the process for transparency? And or has there been an increase in the need of?
Uh I think the transparency is the biggest thing, you know, and I and I don't I don't want to go into all the details. But it's, I just think it's important for us to 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 lead out that way, right? Um the educational space where we're transparent, things are wide open and. Just could, when people know that they can call and be heard, people just want to be heard, you know. And so when we create a space where people can be heard. And we want it dealt with on the local level, right? We don't, we, it'd be great if it was just that looking at all their districts and 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 charters, their self reporters. Um so, you know, we don't, we don't necessarily need to 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 be involved there. We'd love for it, I'll be taking care of it at the local level. So we just want to make sure that it can be. And I think when you give people the opportunity to do that, they won't skip over, they'll go, right. Matter of fact, when you come to to USBE's website, it says, have you followed these steps? Have you spoken to the teacher, the principal, administrator? You know, have you followed these steps before you're gonna file this complaint at the at the State Board? So we we want to empower. Um our schools to be able to deal with it right there.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions or follow up?
Can I say this?
Oh, yeah, please.
Um I I've had it up to this point, I'm in our, in my schools. And I've just made it a point to be in every one of my schools within the next year and got a chance to visit Stacy's school. And if I, if I had to just. In in one word, describe it, it it's special. It really truly is. I I, it was genuine and real. And I had such a good time doing that. And it's opened up so much for me as a board member to be there. Sometimes you're making these decisions at this thirty thousand foot level. And we don't, you know, always get to see what's happening in the classroom or what our administrators are doing. I'm so grateful for our teachers and administrators and the hard work that they put in there. Just having a great time as I, as a Michael Way to your school. So just wanted to say that.
And thank you for your visit. It was very inspiring. Our kids loved it. My staff really appreciated meeting you. So thank you.
The time and the effort eh eh to build those relationships and really gain insight. It allows you to make educated and informed and thoughtful decisions. Right, and and um and those relationships go a long way. And I appreciate too the bridge building of of. If you think about our traditional school space with and wanting to learn and grow. And know what's happening in the charter space. You really, um Rod, you really model that in such a beautiful and deliberate way. And um again, we're very grateful and thank you.
Yeah, one more thing. I forgot, I should have written it all down, but but um. R two seven 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 three one just passed, and that is a rule for the catalyst.
Oh, I saw that.
For the capital grant money. And I'll just tell you this, and this was not intentional. This actually came through our committee and almost went to the full board and passed. But somebody reached out from a local charter and he's he's a friend of mine. He said, look, if you pass this the way it is. All charters uh K through nine are gonna be cut out from from having access to this money. And it wasn't on purpose. It was just the way the rule was written, especially if you deal with CTE. You just, you you're not, you're not thinking about that when you're writing their, writing their rule. So we were able to pull that back in the committee, get it all changed and ironed out. And now all of our schools have access to that money, even our charters K through nine. So it was, it's pretty exciting. It's passed that last month. Or this month, excuse me, this month uh at the board, so.
Thank you so much for sharing that example. Cause that's an example of how really we want, we hope. That our charter schools feel like that they can reach out and share their voice and perspective, which then. Eh being so receptive and bringing it back to committee, altering it to be more inclusive, so that way everyone has that opportunity.
Even the sponsor of the bill, he he didn't, he didn't catch it. And the guy that helps him, he didn't catch. Nobody caught that. It was just a few words that needed to be changed. But this guy caught it. I was very grateful to be there. And then our board was gracious enough to let us pull it back in the committee, get it all fixed up and then write back out to the board. So it's great.
Thanks. This meeting just gets better. Thank you so much. Um we're again grateful for your time and energy and effort. Okay, so uh we, this was brought up in the Director's Report. And this, we've, we've seen this come out in our last few meetings is that we're really trying to, in the spirit of transparency, but also. Education for us as a board, we we're very active in our committees. And so we wanted to provide time for Board Committee Reports. Uh for if if there is a report to be given. And uh and I believe um. I'm just gonna give an overview of what I see here, uh just to, and feel free to correct me if I'm, if I'm off. But we have the uh, we're gonna hear from Finance Committee, uh with their work of the school land trust, of the authorizing committees review of. Uh charter agreements. We know that our legislative interim, um our, that our legislative committee um is working in what's happening in the interim. As well as our executive committee, we we met and are preparing for our new member onboarding and um innovation and oversight to not meet. And um maybe I'm happy to 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 start anytime, I I know, just we'll get, and whenever. Whenever we feel. Yeah, that sounds great. That sounds great. So uh I'd like to go ahead and start with finance. You know, Clint is not here. He normally is reporting for that. With someone else like two.
I'm the other person on the committee.
Right. Thank you for that. So. Kind of balling, balling stepping in. Um thank you, Macro Puls for.
Yeah, no, uh and the the Finance Committee met and as was mentioned in the. Um Executive Director Report and as we talked just a little bit about the consent calendar, we did look at the um. Um the land trust information that was provided to us. And the staff had done a great breakdown of how those changes would affect our charter schools. And we did find, as was mentioned, that the um smaller, small charter schools would be, you know, have an impact that was disproportionate. Yes. And so our recommendation, as the information that's in the, in the um. Consent calendar information shows that if anyone wants to look, it shows what that that breakdown was. And so our recommendation was just don't make any changes at this point until we find a solution that. Would be, you know, good for everyone and not have an adverse impact on the, on the smaller charter schools. And honestly, I think could happen with the small district schools too. So that was our recommendation and that's what we met.
Thank you so much. Thanks for that update. Uh our authorizing committee.
Uh I can speak to that. And refill gaps. Uh so, so one of the things that um, this is just some background, hopefully this will help uh new, newish uh. Board members. Um we we modernized our contract for our charter schools. A year, two years ago, something like that. We came up with a new contract that that's well written, it's been well vetted. And from time to time, there are needs for schools to sign up for the new contract. And there are circumstances in place there that Marie could explain better than I could, but um. One of the, one of the elements of that contract is Schedule A, an attachment. That really requires a robust explanation of what the school is trying to accomplish and and lays out in some detail. Uh the key elements of the school in such a way that that we as a, as the authorizer can hold schools accountable. Uh it allows us to be uh able to provide the oversight that we need to provide as as a board. And so from time to time, as an authorizing committee, we we receive these new applications. And our staff is working behind the scenes with the schools to put all of these together. Uh so we had, we had four uh new contracts that we reviewed this month. We had uh Mountain Heights, Providence Hall, Thomas Edison. And Wallace Stegner, all fantastic schools. Um. So we reviewed those new contracts. And uh typically, as we review them as an authorizing committee. Uh the staff then gets back to the school to work on finalizing them. If there's anything that needs to be tweaked. You know, if there's not enough detail, then staff will work with the schools to to try to get them just right. Once they're ready and uh the schools are in a position to to sign them, and Marie, this is where you can fill in some gaps for me. We we reach a point where we can finalize the applications and 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 typically, correct me if I'm wrong. Once we approve them, it's effectively something that just shows up on the consent calendar, isn't that right? And and so what one, one thought I have, there there's a lot of work that we expect the schools to go through to put these together. I mean, you can tell I'm reading these. Uh the Schedule A, sometimes it's just over a page long, but there's a lot of content, a lot of revision that goes into it. Something I'd love to see us do a little bit more as a board is just something I I'd love for all of us to consider. We 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 serve two basic functions if you look at our mission. One is. Uh is authorizing new schools and two is the oversight that we provide to all schools. And I I I'd love the opportunity for us to have more face time with our schools. If we're not necessarily on site on a regular basis, which we're not, and we've talked, we talked last month about some ways we can be on site a little bit more often. Um I love the idea of having schools come have face time with us in our meetings. So that we can do a little bit better job of building rapport and goodwill and relationships with our schools at the same time wi- without. Them feeling like we're calling them in uh to be put on the spot.
Yeah.
Uh I'd love to give schools more of an opportunity to shine and especially for all the work they put into. Things like a Schedule A to a new contract. So something to consider is getting schools. More opportunities to come visit with us. Uh if they are putting in place a new contract. Uh should we give them more opportunities to come and and visit with us and even if it's five to ten minutes, just to tell us. About all the exciting things that they're doing in their schools. So that that was on my mind at our. That, that was on my mind at our last authorization committee meeting. Um, we also, uh. Yeah, yeah, please.
If that's okay. Um, so it was my first chance to, um, uh, work in this committee. And review these four, um, charter schools, schedule As. And a couple of things struck me as we were looking at them and discussing them. Um, one, as a charter director. Um, there may be a feeling that this is some kind of a gotcha or getting into our business and what are they, you know, or. Are there going to be repercussions, um, that as we work through this process? Um, but my, my experience with this, um, just in the last month and, and seeing how we address these four schools. I would, I would say, one, um, from what I've seen, it's a very, very supportive, um, action. And that to go through this process as a leadership team in your charter school. Can be a very healthy, um, activity to make sure, especially if you've been around for a while. Um, just as, as a charter school in your team, making sure you're, you're focused on your mission and vision. And I think that can be very beneficial internally to the charter school. And then to see how, um, the staff here at the state charter school board. Worked through some of the finer details to make sure they were saying exactly what they, they really wanted to say. Um, again, a, a really healthy level of support that we are offering these charter schools. And then as we reviewed them in, as the authorizing committee, again, it was actually an opportunity to, for us to. Um, be very impressed and, um, excited about the options that these schools brought to the state. And, uh, so it's, uh, my, my experience was it's not a critical eye. It's not. A, um, compliance eye that we're looking at these things. It's really to fine tune and to be able to communicate clearly. What you're doing as a school and that you should be very proud of that. And so I just wanted to say my experience with it was very positive and I was very impressed with how. Um, it sounded like the staff had worked with these schools and that, um, it's, it's a very supportive action. Not necessarily, like I said, a gotcha or compliance, um, action and. Uh, again, a very healthy exercise to go over as a, to walk through as a school leadership team, just to check and make sure we're still on track. With, with what, you know, with the mission and vision of the school. So. Just wanted to communicate that to fellow charter directors out there that, um, if you haven't done this yet. It could be a very positive activity to do with your staff and to build that relationship with the state charter school board.
Those are, those are great comments. Yeah, I couldn't agree more.
And it's, if it's okay, I can speak to that. I can say that, uh, for our school, it was, uh, uh, to your point, it was a wonderful opportunity to kind of sit back and say. You know, over the last X amount of years, this is where our charter is and here's how we're kind of aligning our efforts to the goals that we have. But I think it also allowed us to kind of evaluate, kind of like an accreditation, um. You know, what, what is our purpose? What's our direction? Or do we feel like we're serving our community? Are we speaking to the goals that are in our charter? Have we looked at our charter? Um, do we know what those elements are? Are there things that we need to change? And, and speaking to our interaction with the state charter, uh, board and, and the staff that, that supported that process. Um, they provide us a lot of insight in their experience with, uh, going to other schools and, and seeing things that are working and. Um, it definitely felt like a collaborative approach where. We could almost borrow best practices from other schools and really talk about, you know, these are some things that are really going well. And, uh, them sharing some of those things out. Um, it's a very powerful practice. And, uh, just like accreditation can be one of those where you trim tab a little bit and sharpen the saw, um. Uh, it's, it is a, it's a very powerful, uh, experience. So. So coming from somebody who just went through the process, it is a lot of, to your point, it is a lot of work, but work that's worth doing.
Yeah, we want to be able to celebrate what, what's going on. And, and part of the problem is the, these things. And this is just a reminder to all of us, I'm as guilty of this as the next person, that some things just get buried on a consent calendar and we don't really dig into it. Uh, but there's so much work that goes into these items. That we approved with just a quick, no discussion vote at the start of our meetings. And this is a great example of it. There's just great, great content there. And we as a board should be very much aware of what our schools are doing in this regard.
Can I, just can I tie into this? I love everything that I've heard. I think it's so healthy and so good and so, so great. But, and I, I'm saying this coming up in, in the legislative report. There's been a discussion and I know last me- meeting, we talked about what we might want to do, but. Identifying, you're talking about identifying some really great things that are happening and, and I heard the word celebrate. And, and I think, um, sharing, adding sharing to the celebration. So that for other charter schools, but also the public and district schools. That, that celebrating and that sharing in the, eh, in the tent, not the share, not the celebrating and saying, haha, look at us. And not you, you know, not, but in a collaborative approach and saying. We found this really awesome secret sauce.
Great.
And, and maybe, uh, you know, and you could share what that's yours, you know? I think there's in, to just layer on to the celebration, the sharing portion of it. Could be really helpful, especially for some things that we're seeing in the legislative.
Uh, I, I, I agree with that. I mean, ju- just as an example, um. I don't want to make, make this go on spot, but your application was fantastic. Or your schedule A, uh, Thomas Edison Charter School, just as an example, um, it, it's a four-page schedule A. It lays out the key elements of the charter school, um. In, in very, and, and this is single spaced, small font, in great detail, the expectations they have for their students. Um, how their curriculum is intended to challenge their students in great detail. Um, it explains how their, their vision for classwork, homework, citizenship, but I, I go on and on, lots of other things. And this encapsulates what they're doing as a school and why they're successful. And it gets buried in the files of the state charter school board after it gets signed and. Uh, I don't know if anyone ever really talks about it, at least on our level beyond that. So. Something to consider, I'm not proposing a solution necessarily, but I, I'm proposing that we just give more thought to how we can. How we can replicate, how we can celebrate, all of those sorts of things that we know are really important. Yeah.
And then to me, as chair, after a committee meeting and just reflecting a bit. Um, and for our, our newer board members, um, we haven't had an authorizing committee meeting for a while as we were down in membership and. Prior to that, um, we've pushed out updated agreements to about a third of our portfolio. Um, but they've been in process, so we, uh, haven't had a lot come in, uh, for a while. Um, we had introduced the signing day, uh, as a way to celebrate. Where they would at least come in and, you know, kind of like a college bidding day signing. Um, but, uh, the reflection based on, uh, one of our other school directors, uh, who said, can I come and watch, you know, on consent? Can, but it's not that exact. Um, uh, was an invitation to maybe come share, you know, about their school. And, um, you know, if that is the direction the board would like to go, you know, we could. In addition, on a signing day, you know, have each school maybe share for five or 10 minutes, you know, about their school and. Doing those, the celebrations, putting that out to the public, that, that sharing of their best practices, their secret sauce as we.
I was just going to say, I thank you so much for bringing this to us and that you decided. And that you were talking about this in your committee meeting. And I so appreciate these really, um, directed. Relevant experiences of what we were hearing. And I love the idea of a, of, uh, just a, a five to 10 minute. Um, Sharon, and I think, and to remember Paul's first point, we could say, and part of your presentation, you know, what is the, what? You know, if you were able to get eh eh eh, at a conference, right, your elevator kind of share out.
Right.
What would that one thing or two things be? But what really, what? What, what stand, what makes you stand out or what is allowing you to be so successful or effective and? I think that would be great to hear that. And because then it's documented as part of the public minutes where then. Hope, I know folks are listening out there in our owland. Uh, but I know it really, I, I've heard from folks in our community within the state and, and outside of the state that are really listening and. And, and garnering ideas of what's working well here in Utah, because we, again, to, we want to share this because ultimately. One, it makes, it makes children everywhere and families everywhere better.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, I, I love, and I really appreciate and love that idea. Uh, can I have one more thing and I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm, then I'm done.
Oh, okay.
Whatever you want.
Oh, okay, thank you. Uh, I wrote a note, um, you know, anytime that I can, um, bring in a potential workshop for a learning opportunity. Think this could be a great opportunity for our summer, um. State charter school conferences to potentially do a workshop just about preparing your schedule A, your new contract. And then hearing from charter school leaders, just, um, remember Marshall, to your point of this, yes, it was a lot of work, but it was work. It was work well, work, work, time well spent or work well done or, you know, that. It, this is important that we, we provide the time as your, as a leadership team and as a school to, to self reflect. So our, our hope is, is that again, this isn't necessarily like a gotcha, but this is a, 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 an aid. To help ensure that you're having these conversations, that your school continues to improve. And I think we could, we could have a workshop. Or offer that session, uh, at one of the summer conferences of just about that and modeling that process and what you experienced in real time with your schools. And then it also really lends itself of how we, we're, again, we want to support our schools in, in getting, in being better. Uh, so just a little, I'm not just saying that, so I know that we have some folks out in our crowd today that are. Um, with doing conference, are in charge of our conferences, which I just, I, I would plug over and over again, because it's a great way for us to share. So thank you, uh, great. I'm going to turn it over now to our legislative committee.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I, it's November. There's a lot going on now. I, I, I'm going to start with, uh, a bill that we were engaged in last session. That didn't go through and in, instead of going through. Several of us, I for one, and, and, um, Kim Frank and Roy Spent Hassel. And a couple of other people signed an agreement that they would hold the bill and that we would work on it during the interim. So we had to sign an agreement says, yes, we know there'll be a bill, bill next time and we will work on it. Well, um. I, I won't say there hasn't been work done, but it, we haven't had the meetings that was anticipated. And Senator Johnson was the, was the, uh, sponsor of that bill. And there have been some discussions. Um, it's interesting that, that bill last year was giving a sizable amount of money. To other authorizers. So the intent was kind of to create. Or remove the obstacles or whatever to have higher education and districts. Authorize more charter schools. And as we talked about it. To Senator Johnson and others, and we said, we think it's great. We think they should do that, but the way you're proposing it in this bill is not the best approach. And that's kind of what we said and we were, I guess, successful in persuading that that was the case. Anyway. There have been some conversations. I had a conversation for like an hour on the phone with Senator Johnson, said, let's have a meeting. When, when are we going to do it? And so we had a really good conversation, really good. And can found that we were kind of on the same page a lot more than one might have thought, you know, our perspective as well as his. And what can we do to increase that? And, and our idea has been that. Um, if we need to provide funding for the true cost of authorization to authorizers, that's appropriate. Just the ways that it was done, it wasn't that way. So, so, um. He said, okay, when I finished talking to him, it's been about a month maybe. And when I finished the conversation, he was going to get back, talk to a person and, and then. Convene this meeting. It hasn't happened still. So I, I'm not sure why. I think there's some new thoughts out there and I think. Some of our conversations have done that. And I know you were able to have a conversation with one of the people involved. And that's great. And, and remember B seniors on the legislative committee and he's had conversations. So there's been work done. Just hasn't been quite the same way. That we anticipated it. And so I don't know, I'm not aware. I don't know. We'll watch that.
Yeah.
But, but in context, so we're, we're watching that in context with that. Um, as we think about working districts and higher ed becoming. Um, uh, authorizing more charter schools, the question comes, why don't they? And that's been an interesting question to kind of look at and think about. And one of the things that we thought. Is, goes along a little bit with our conversation about. About sharing is, is if there are ways that we can help. Um, work together with higher ed, with districts and, and share what it means, how the, how it works. Because, you know, we've talked about that and that's. Um, I think maybe a lack of understanding has something to do with it. So the things that we can do to share. To help people understand and sort of work more together and not adversely. I think will be helpful. So, so along that, so there is another bill out there that actually is going down the same path. That's even worse than the last one.
Oh.
And so we are working with, I've spoken to the sponsor and when, if that bill becomes public, then I can share that with you, but. Um, it, there's been some conversations with that too. So we're working behind the scenes to try to. Help that. And that was, we talked about that one in our legislative committee meeting, um. Yeah, I just wrote down support, educate, inform, share, work together, you know, those kinds of things that will be helpful. In maybe solving the problem as well as, um, just creating a, a better environment. Um. There's, there's a couple of other bills that I'm aware of, that I've talked to people about that are coming up, that are, there's a couple others that are charter specific. And again, when those become public, just know that we're working, we're talking to people and then become public, then we can share them in public. Public way, um, and those are, and the two I'm thinking of are that are specific that are good. You know, they're, they're positive. So we might get to do some work on supporting and. And, uh, then the other thing that I just wanted to mention that has come up, um. There were some questions on some charter schools that would like to open a, or, or, or be associated with a preschool. With their charter. And I just wanted to make a statement. To say that there is nothing that I'm aware of in state board rule or in code that prohibits that. So. That would be something that could happen if they wanted to. And that was just something maybe to make people aware of, but it's not.
I think that's right. There's some schools that are doing it. There, there are definitely legal ways that could happen.
Yeah, they're not, it's not prohibited. And so they would, you know, if somebody wants to do it. Go down that path. So huh, those are, those are the things I like to say. There are things coming, um. Oh, one other thing. Yeah, one thing, other thing, um. In the past, there has been a reporting requirements committee, as you know. Um, I was on it before I was on this board as a legislator and, and, um, the member of this board was on it. And I'm now on that, but it's now got a new name. It's called administration and transparency. Kind of seeks to do the same thing, but in a little different way. Uh, there's also a committee that's out there. I, I'm, I'm not on, but there are members of the charter community that are, are on, and it was a bill from last year. And it is its, uh, school data committee. Doing some similar things that, that committee is reviewing and looking at, um. Student information system. And, and looking at Trump, at the possibility of creating a statewide school information. System, which means all of the systems that people already have would be gone. So don't know how that's going to go. The committee's working on it. They're meeting. Um, again, we have representation from the charter community on that committee. So, so that's helpful. And the, the report, the last meeting I went to with the administration and transparency. The, oh, the result of that was the chair wanted to create, to create a list of all the. Reports that are required. Which I don't think he realizes what that means, because. When I started my legislation on reporting, the, 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 uh, they tried to do that on, in an audit and they said, there's too many, we can't count them all. And so we'll see where that goes. So that's another thing that's. And so we'll see where that goes. So that's another thing that's helpful to, um, that, to watch as far as legislative. And, and all the education, cause really a lot of the education bills affect charters too.
Yeah.
So we'll be watching and that's kind of where we are at this point.
Thank you so much, uh, for your active participation in insider knowledge, uh, which I think is just so beneficial for all of us. I, I think one thing's for certain, it's gonna be an active, busy legislative season. Uh, thank you. Okay, next, uh, going to, as we mentioned, our innovation committee did not have a chance to meet. Uh, do we have someone from the oversight committee that would like to share from your meeting? They didn't meet.
No, yeah, I, I think I put innovation.
Oh, oh, and oversight didn't meet, sorry. Thank you for sharing that. Okay, great. And then lastly, we have our executive uh, committee, we did meet. I did mention, we were really, we spent, um, time talking about onboarding our new members. Associate Director, Vice Charity, think that you would like to add to that, just our time together.
We'll share that guide with everyone.
Get great, yeah. Um, is that ready to be, can we share that now with everyone?
We're following the board meeting.
Yeah, that would be great. So, um, with our two new members joining, uh, we found that we could really benefit from an onboarding guide to provide, uh, just a welcome to the team, but also just really critical and useful information that you wanna have at your fingertips as you dive in. And as, um, Vice Chair and I were talking, we got ahold of this, we're like, uh, this is powerful and great for us. So we will, we'll set, make sure that that's emailed to all of you. I know for me, I'm just gonna be keeping this up on my desktop because it's, it's everything and anything, just a twenty-page document about the, our work, uh, as, as a charter school board. And I just am so grateful for that. I think that, um, one, it sets the tone I think to the work that we have and we also wanna provide as much information so we feel that we can be educated in the decisions that we're making. So thank you. And that was really, um, Associate Director was way, way behind the scenes and the driving force behind all of that. So thank you for all of your work. Excellent. So a busy month, lots of activity and I really do appreciate, I know it's extra time, um, some of you are serving on two committees and we, uh, just so appreciate, uh, just the, the time that you put into those committees because a lot of, that's where the, a lot of the work, uh, happens. All right. Oh, wow, we're a little ahead of schedule, which is just great. Okay, that sounds great. Okay, no worries. Um, should we, uh, how about, um, how about can we take it back when you, right, let's do that. Um, it is, uh, it was ten seventeen, let's be that, let's, I know I sounded very much like a teacher there. I took my class last night, so. Okay, uh, I'm gonna give you all seven minutes at ten twenty-five. A really good thing to be back here at ten twenty-five and we'll jump in with our discussion and action item on, uh, our just application policy. All right, thank you everyone. We'll be back in about seven minutes.
We in real time as a teacher, when students like steps to talk about blah, blah, blah. And then we never get our homework. That's exactly what that's.
It was so good and we should.
Okay, sounds great. Um, thanks. And so I think we're back on everyone. And for those of you listening in live, thank you all for continuing to join us. So uh, we are going to dive in now. We have just our one action item for today, discussion and action item. And this is actually tabled from a previous meeting. It's a proposal on application administrative administrative denial policy. And I know that even just with the word denial, it sounds a little heavy. But this really is a it's a providing guidance. And also a level of professionalism to all of our students for our work in regards to the application process. So this policy is a draft policy. You're gonna hear a little bit more in a minute, but it's really designed for sure that proposals meet minimum standards. And discuss a feedback and possible, and we want to discuss the feedback and possible action to initiate a thirty day review policy for the public. Again, this really came out of we just having so many schools come to us this this round. We just noticed some gaps and that we think that this could really support our schools and really providing a professional application. Marie, would you like to add to to that?
Um, I can add to them and start presenting.
That would be great. Yes, please take it away.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, and I put this up here. It's also of course in your um, meetings packet. Um, and of course, looking at our timing here. This would essentially go into effect for for next year's process. Because we'd be in the middle right now with our proposals and applications. Um, so really, we're considering this for next year's review time. Um, but it's is committed, you know, to helping us just making sure that we have maybe a an even better proposal, the application review process. Um, and so this administrative denial, if we come down to the second section there, um, talks about what would be some reasons that a proposal or an application could be administratively denied. Um, and as mentioned, it's in a draft form right now. Um, but it could be administratively denied if it was material and materially incomplete. Or missing some required sections. Um, another one would be if it contains something that's falsified, inaccurate, or unverifiable. Uh, the third would be if it fails to demonstrate their governing board capacity. Um, in a substantive way such as board members who don't complete background sheets, lack of signatures. Or if they make changes to their work composition without the required notifications during the proposal and application phase. Um, it could also be administratively denied if they don't comply with page limits or formatting requirements that are outlined, if they miss submission deadlines, or if they fail to meet any of the statutory or regulatory uh, requirements that are set within both board rule or Utah code. Um, what that procedure could look like would be that within ten days of receiving the proposals or the applications, uh, staff would review these proposals and applications uh, for these specific things, this completeness. And we would give a published checklist to the applicants. And so they would, you know, have this information ahead of time. There's no sense of trying to surprise anyone here uh, within this process. Um, of course, if a deficiency was found, um, the applicant would be notified in writing and provided a cure period of forty eight hours uh, for them to submit any missing items or correct any items during that time. Uh, if needed, staff could request some clarifications, but this would not be a time for substantial coaching for the individuals. Um, if a deficiency remains after that forty eight hour cure period, then staff would prepare a written administrative denial, uh, sharing those specific reasons. And then it would actually be issued by the executive director and placed on record. And so that applicant checklist, a few of the notes. Um, it would let them know that the body of the proposal is limited to ten pages. Their application body is limited to hundred pages. Um, there are some things that are excluded from that, such as contents, their cover page, their appendices. Um, there's some requirements related to scanned documents. And and all of this is also to help you as board members. We don't want to, you know, point on it, right? It's really hard to read. Um, also, we're going to navigate with any other needs. Um, if our documents need to be typed and submitted as single PDF files.
Nothing wrong.
Um, it needs to have the offer of character recognition, so the little selectable and searchable. Um, the school's name, should we, uh, the destination, how it's sent in. Um, and then just some uh, pieces that would be in that checklist. Making sure they've typed it, they've checked their grammar errors, they've stated things concisely. Uh, it's clear and understandable, they've used titles correctly. Um, has the school name there. Um, they followed the order of the proposal or the application. Um, uh, for their application. And again, this comes back to uh, required board rules and statutes that they've submitted to each district office. Um, they've saved it into a PDF format that all their formatting translates well and that it's been signed by all of their board members and you haven't missed any pieces there. Um, so as as mentioned, if uh, if our board has any pieces they would like to edit or change here, we can certainly make those adjustments. But otherwise, staff is ready to post this for that thirty day uh, prominent public comment period, and then we would bring that back uh, for your final consideration, board, along with any public feedback received during that time. Chair, I'll turn it off to you for any questions or um, other.
Thank you so much. I don't have any questions or or suggestions for edits. Any questions? Yes, please.
I have a wondering, so the staff review is ten business days, but then we move to forty eight hours for the um, response or the cure period. And I wonder if maybe a business day or something like that. I'm anticipating or I'm thinking we get feedback on a Friday afternoon and I got forty eight hours to respond. That was just, and I I don't have strong feelings about it. It's a wondering, like if that forty eight hours is the right way to frame that time.
Uh, I I appreciate that and I agree. And I could see uh, thinking that or questioning what does forty eight hours mean, especially if we're notating or noting days earlier. So I think it would be beneficial to be consistent. And we could say two business days.
Yes.
I think that would be.
In my mind.
Exactly, exactly. So that way, if it is a Friday potentially, right? It's Monday, Tuesday. Makes it really clear. Excellent.
Can I just ask, is this on a tight enough timeframe that that we can only give them two days to get back to us? Or should we just say, I mean, is it, is it? I I don't want to muck up the process if this in order to hit our agenda and to give staff adequate time for review, we 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 need to have them turn it around more quickly. But it seems like giving them a week makes sense. That's that's what I would suggest if we have the time in there.
I could see that, and especially if there's a signature potentially missing, it might take time to find, track down somebody and to just the email back and forth of getting that.
Mm hmm.
I haven't been quick to work.
How about, uh, I'm just thinking, not just like pulling a number, but I'm thinking of, I don't want it to be too long, but I think five business days.
You're on the same page.
We are.
If it's possible, yeah.
Yeah, like, as long as it doesn't bring a line full of our timeline, and that gives folks that. And I think that's adequate time for email communication and then to get it back to you.
Would there just be the one of you? If they submitted it, would it be, would there be an opportunity for them to get additional feedback? That's maybe that another by day cycle.
Hmm. Hmm. As far as the administrative completeness. That's a good question.
Because I could see a situation where they submit it within the, you know, the period and, you know, ten business days for us to review it, right? And then we continue to find things through that.
If I may.
Please, because we might say this.
So ahead of, like, their official, uh, turning in a proposal or an application, um, staff is available as needed to all of our applicants and our proposal applicants for any sort of technical assistance. Um, we have schools and we always even say ultimately the board votes. So this is, you know, us just providing, you know, feedback uh, from what we've seen over time or, you know, suggestions generally. Um, you know, if we note those things, you know, make sure you sign your application when it comes in officially. Um, so I would say they've generally been able to receive feedback all along the process if they've chosen to engage in that. Um, which I think was part of where the days, like, we had months, but I think the the five days is definitely something further went to. Um, we're just trying to figure out where is that time to say you you've had a time and opportunity that you know, we're going to move forward without changing this process to for this year.
But.
Yeah, no, so.
Go ahead.
So, um, they get their extras, we put in the extra five days, whatever. And they still don't get back, then what happens? And I think we mentioned that.
And it would be that, uh, right here. So if it's, if a deficiency still remains, which appeared it. Um, then that written administrative denial would be prepared, citing the specific grounds. And then it would be issued by the executive director and placed on record.
And then they.
Reporting back to the board.
But then they could, they could come back next year, of course. That was the, really the question I have, is it done?
Not.
Okay, then the next, okay. I I thought that, but I wanted to. Yeah.
Mm hmm. Mm hmm.
It, I I correct me if I'm wrong, but I think part of the genesis of this was, in our last round of proposals, we had a whole bunch of proposals that were so sloppy. That were so, uh, almost schlepped together and it'd be crap. There were just some real sloppy applications and it was kind of a mess to get to get through them. We want to be careful as a board not to be so prescriptive that we're turning people away on just little nitty gritty grounds. And we want to be careful there. But this seems to strike a nice balance of at least setting some minimum requirements of form that make it, that that facilitate us being able to get get through these and our staff being able to work with them. So I I think this is good. I like it as is. But I I I think we should be, we we should always be aware that when we anytime we enact a rule or a procedure of some kind in doing that, um, it it uh, it it allows schools to say, well, if we've checked the boxes, we we should be in good shape. I think this is fine. This is, this just deals with some formatting and things like that. So I I I think this is great. I don't have any issues with it.
Mm hmm. Thank you for mentioning that. That was what was on my, on my mind. Um, and I think we want to ensure we're honoring our time, we're honoring the process. The work of school and starting a school, a serious business. And to your point, it starts from the moment that you have this initial idea and then it ends up on paper and putting it out in front of a a body that has a responsibility to vote whether we think you are going to be uh, proper stewards of the millions of dollars that we're going to give you, as well as the responsibility of young children in their, in their future. It's significant. And for us and to your point, um, I I just so appreciate working with you, Vice Chair, because I I, when you sounded like my grandmother using words. A little bit in there and then I would have, you know, just, yeah, like, wondering, like, have the proper signatures. We really want you to have a professional document, right? Because that is also, um, that is, that's how you're showing up in this space. And we really, we just are, and to your point, we don't want this to exclude or this isn't meant to be like, oh, you know, look, no, but it's actually more to honor the time and the work that we're doing here. And then it begins from the moment that these applications um, start to formulate and and how you present yourself as a functioning board. Um, and and agreed, I think that we've also just, so folks know, we've, we, the structure is in place with staff to ensure that people have, you know, the time and the opportunity. And I feel again, you know, I think five days is is um, is kind and compassionate um, for for a turnaround. Uh, yeah. And I just, I appreciated everybody's comments and questions because that's added, it's ensured too that we've now, this is part of our conversation and public comment of just the impetus behind this policy. Any other comments or feedback? Okay, so with that, we do need to, uh, we need to make a motion, if I can entertain a motion, uh, that we would like to, uh, let me see if I can, we, well, we need it, we need it to be posted for the thirty day review policy or thirty day review period.
Yes, and if you would like the, to the.
Oh, and we would, we would like to with uh, with the uh, uh, edit or amendment from forty eight hours to five days. And I think that was the only uh, change that we noted here today.
Yeah, and and I'm sorry, uh, Chair, just just remind me, so the the motion is to go ahead and approve the publication of this. At this point, it is not to adopt it yet, because we still have the opportunity to consider some of the public comment. Okay, that's what I thought, just make sure.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we move the proposal on the application administrative denial policy forward to the thirty day um, period with the adjustment from forty eight hours, forty eight hours to five days.
Perfect. Excellent. So we have a motion from Member Pulse. Could we have a second?
Second.
Great. And a second for Member of Asset. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And it doesn't look like any, we we all said aye. So I think that motion passes and we look forward to them. That will probably show up back for us based on timing, maybe December meeting, maybe, maybe not, I don't think so, probably our January. Or, and then we'll see, that'll be a busy meeting, so. You don't want to necessarily, but it could, we can, this can be a February meeting item if needed, but you will see this again. So thank you all so much. Okay, excellent. So today we have a few staff reports to our, uh, to our board. We, oh, like, no, in fact, Vice Chair and I were talking at break just about the just, um, we're so grateful and for the work that we have, uh, the the work our staff is able to do and and really the capacity that our staff holds. Uh, so we wanted to hear from staff with some brief reports and we have two presentations today. So we have our audit manager, audit manager, Smitri DeKaw will report on the first year twenty twenty six charter school original budget review summary. And then we have our IT analyst, Amber Huster will present uh, on our twenty twenty seven charter school enrollment projections. Excited for both of these. Welcome, please.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Uh, so let, yeah, you know, the topic of my presentation was just said by Chair Spiker here, you know, uh, review of twenty twenty six original charter school budget and also a- analysis of budget findings. So let me start with celebrating our strengthened collaboration, which has blossomed over the last two years under new leadership. You know, with the USPE team, uh, especially the USB finance team that I get to work on a frequent basis. You know, this has been, this collaboration has been a great example of how strategic alignment and shared goals can drive meaningful progress. So I thank, you know, USB finance, I mean, and John Palmer in particular for, you know, uh, spending his time and expertise to go over some of these budgets that we've looked into, you know, for some of the SCSP charter uh, schools. So the purpose of this presentation is, you know, for the purpose of our meeting, you know, with the, um, uh, USB finance, you know, team, uh, was to re, the, to include it, you know, basically the review of twenty twenty six original budget submission, you know, for SCSP authorized schools and also focusing on timeliness, fund balance projections and budget practices that were applied, and also monitoring for signs of recurring budget issues. So the process, in the process, you know, we, uh, for budget compliance, you know, we tracked, you know, on time submissions and followed up with schools to ensure all budgets were filed on time. And also regarding the financial health screening, we reviewed fund balance projections and also performed reasonable check, you know, which means assess sustainability of budgets and making sure they align with enrollments. And also be, uh, validated revenues, you know, compared state revenue estimates uh, included in the budgets against legislative projections um, for reasonableness and also, you know, check prior findings to confirm that schools had avoided repeat findings, you know, uh, related to budget deficits and also viability testing, you know, verify bank balances for schools with expenses exceeding revenues to ensure shortfall coverage. And then the key findings, you know, were that most SCSP authorized schools, you know, submitted the original fiscal year twenty twenty six budgets on time. And we did, made a follow, couple of follow ups, you know, to make sure uh, the schools complied, especially the new schools, because, you know, as they were new, they had learning and a lot of things and, you know, we just wanted to make them aware, you know, when the budgets were due and, you know, they were like, you know, they were very uh, responsive and, you know, uh, submitted the budget, budgets as soon, as soon as we just reached out. So thank you for their time and, you know. So thank you for their time and, you know, taking this, you know, like, um just appreciating like, you know, how important it is for these budgets to be submitted on time. And also another finding uh was rela- related to fund balance projections. So what we found was most schools projected positive fund balances and aligned with funding expectations. And uh the last one here, uh budget reasonableness, submitted budgets were evaluated for sustainability and demonstrated some financial planning. Okay, and as part of our continuous efforts to work together, you know, we are planning to meet and review actuals, you know, that have been submitted in UPEF system. And also we want to keep it an ongoing oversight and support. So we want to, you know, keep monitoring and, you know, just supporting schools through USBE finance partnership and to uh uphold financial integrity and compliance within the SCSP authorized charter schools. So, yeah, happy to take any questions.
Thank you.
That was my presentation.
Thank you so much. And I uh I just want to highlight, I'm so grateful too that you started with just uh celebration and excitement over the partnership of how, you know, not only and and frankly, I I know that the finance piece is a big is a big part of that, that I really see this, I don't think about it that that much because it's not on my my immediate periphery. I think about relationship building and how we're really promoting innovation and and the the methodology. So I am so grateful. And I just, I'm so grateful too that you're part of this staff. Uh other questions, comments?
That's great.
You have a moment of personal privilege there.
Yes.
Um, so uh Smriti uh you know, reports directly to me and um, you know, as as we transitioned over the last, you know, few years, um, all of our staff members set goals. And uh one of the goals that she first set was that uh she wanted to work a lot closer with USBE and with the finance team. And I remember uh initially being like, well, why? Like, what 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 will that do for us? Uh she was able to present, you know, here's some ideas and here's uh, you know, I think that will strengthen things uh both, you know, our relationship with state government, but also, you know, how that will benefit our schools. And so uh, you know, we said, okay, let's let's try that. And uh she's absolutely crushed that goal every year uh and been able to then, you know, improve upon that. Um and I know that uh the state finance team that gets to work with her uh has so much uh respect and admiration for uh the way that she's developed, uh, you know, that partnership as well. And so it's just been fun to watch as she's uh taken that idea, that goal and really stepped into it and uh further strengthened um our our portfolio and then uh, you know, that that relationship that we have with our state of education.
So thank you. Thank you for kind words and thank you for being uh, you know, always very supportive, you know, I love having Maria as my direct supervisor and, you know, associative executive director. She is, yeah. And it's a wonderful be feeling, you know, getting to work with Mary every day. You know, she's always there and I'm really appreciative of who she is and how much she cares for all of us. So thank you, Maria.
Hey, I suppose I do have questions. We're so far ahead of schedule. This is amazing. Uh Smriti, I'd love to ask you a couple slides back.
Sure.
If you could just go back, um, I want to say this, you know, one more. Um, yeah, so that that second, that second bullet point, we say most schools.
Mm hmm.
How how many schools did not project positive fund balances and and how many schools did not align with funding expectations? How 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 significant is the problem? Because most sounds great in a way, but it also suggests that we have a lot of schools that are, at least some schools that are falling for.
So I, as far as I can remember now, you know, it's, it was just one or two schools, you know, that had that, you know, negative fund balance. And we did reach out and we found out they had some big projects lined up, you know, those funds were being, you know, used in a good way and they wouldn't have that, you know, moving on to the next year. So they had some very good reasoning behind what, why that was the case. So.
Okay, so you didn't have any schools where the 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 projected fund balances uh or the funding expectations were were alarming or in in crisis?
No, no, we didn't have any schools, yeah. In general, all the charter schools were, you know, budgeted fairly reasonably. And then, you know, we, yeah, overall, it looked real compared to, you know, like, because this is a new thing that we just started, you know, this year. But, you know, having those experiences in the past, this was like re- a really good year in that sense.
Do you do you feel like we're providing adequate uh financial training to our charter schools?
Uh.
Or is there, is there anything different we should, we should be considering with regard to to financial training for our schools?
Mm hmm.
Or financial support? I I know, I I I have to think that a lot of this is attributable to the amazing support that schools get on the financial side from from you and from the rest of our staff. But is there anything different you think we we could do there to support our schools on the finance side?
No, yeah, you know, actually, so this is uh, you know, we uh me and Lisa, you know, as part of the finance team, that we are coming up with this finance training, you know, with that we are putting together uh for our schools, you you know, at this time, we have currently one school that have reached out for that support. But we would think, you know, this would be very helpful having this resources because because we do have resources here and there. But we want to make it one whole package, you know, so that we could deliver whenever, you know, we need to. So, yeah, we are working on that and we should have that resource available in a couple of weeks by the end of November, I would say. So definitely something the that we have been working on.
True.
So, yeah, and
Excellent.
Yeah.
This is great.
Great questions. I know, I so appreciate that. I so appreciate you took advantage of the time.
Yeah, I mean, our our mission includes supportive authorizing, uh uh and and I love that language. Uh and as we go, I don't want to get too far ahead of myself, Chair, but uh and as we talk about NACSA and some of the experiences, what we learned there. Um uh different authorizers do a lot of different things in this regard, like on the finance side. Um it I get the sense that some authorizers uh that they're not supportive necessarily. Um and I like that we have a supportive element to this that that involves training, uh giving feedback, checkups, if you will, and uh anyway. Yeah, I I I'm going to get ahead of myself, so I'm just going to shut up for that one. But I think this is great.
I I I just, I would say from my own personal experience, I, you know, and I, as a charter school director myself, I came into that role uh with a with education leadership background, but not necessarily a strong I mean, I had a couple classes at school finance. I mean, you know, and I managed my personal budget, right? And I had, and it was critical that I had support, education, those mentorship to really uh be able to effectively manage and manage it, a charter school budget. Uh when that isn't necessarily a skill set that a lot of, I think, our school directors are are coming in with. And so I think that's an excellent point. And also too, why we want to ensure our boards are diverse and we have that financial expertise to then work with our staff as well. So. Excellent. Thank you. Um any other comments or questions?
Maybe just a a thought on budget reasonableness, and that kind of speaks to what you were talking a little bit about. Um, not knowing the process, so there are pretty clear parameters on what reasonable look-ness looks like. Meaning, is it kind of leaning one to, you know, your debt service ratios, your cash on hand? I'm sure all of those things kind of come in because honestly, that can, as a charter director, provide some really nice guardrails for training and allowing you to sit back and go, if I were to project this out for three to five or a ten year plan, um if I could keep within this type of reasonableness and be able to use that for sustainability, uh it can be a really, really powerful tool. So I don't know, any insights on that?
Yeah, you know, that's all, you know, because that's the matrix that we look at, you know, internally here. I know we do look into, you know, all those metrics and that, you know, cash on hand, you know, debt service coverage ratio and things of that nature. And but, you know, particularly looking into this original budget submission, we were looking into, you know, like reasonable surrounding. Like, let's say the schools has budgeted having these many numbers, but does that match into what's coming in from state revenue perspective? You know, are they, you know, taking that into consideration? And and what we found was like, yes, you know, I I would say like almost all of our schools were taking that into consideration. It was within that reasonable, you know, reasonable lens. So which was really good. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So appreciate your time. I'm going to have, um Amber, would you come on up and or would you want to manage your slides from right there? You you are. I was like, you were giving me, you were trying to send me a message.
Okay, let me just pull mine up.
Thank you so much. So so appreciate you. And I know our schools are grateful as well. Allows us to, allows them to do the business they want to do.
Mine's a little different. I have two screens, so I have to slide over, but this is what they're seeing at home, so. Works good. And one last thing, just moving things over. Okay. So let's start with um Paul actually like asked me a day or two ago to add a slide because projections was actually one of the issues that we came up against like over year, over year, over year. And we actually worked through the process this year using the new, you know, IDS method. Um so identify, uh discuss it, and then actually come up with a solution as a team. And so we we worked through the process this year and so I'm going to briefly talk about that first. Wow. Here we go. So we have been compiling uh enrollment projections for charter schools for every year since I've been here, so like nine yearsish. But we have lacked like a standard, repeatable process for collecting and using that data. So I know LEAs, they come into UCAP and they submit their prediction of what their enrollment is going to be for. So this year, we're looking at fiscal year twenty seven. So it's about a year and a half ahead of what they even know what students they're going to have. So it really is, do your best guess. Um so we have also had no clear staff take on this role from year to year. Um so I know I started, I didn't really do the minute details of projections. I was more the collecting, like putting it into UCAP, creating the form, sending out the notifications, that kind of stuff. So I kind of knew what was going on, but this year, me and Smriti took this on. And then we had like this discussion of with the identifying what's wrong with our process and discuss it and solve it. So. Um, so our staff, we discussed it thoroughly and created an optimal plan. A critical step was uh our joint meeting with USBE financial staff to actually clarify like what do we do, what do you do? Task, uh what kind of data are we both kind of looking for? And then like, um that was great. USBE financial staff, I agree with Smriti, they're great. Um, if I can, I'll listen now, I know I was going to listen later, but we worked with Delfrost, I know, and Mas and Nestor Rodriguez. And they're really great and easy to work with, friendly people, knew their stuff. Okay. Um so our goal as uh SCSP and USBE staff was to estimate charter enrollment for the future twenty seven school year. And like I said, it's a year and a half ahead. Um. We sc- we start gathering projections from LEAs in September. They have the full month to submit. It's not required. If they don't submit, we do have a default projection of their school year twenty five projections. I mean, enrollment, not projections. Their October one twenty five enrollment projections. There we go. Okay. Um, but this gives them a chance to actually submit what they predict and why. We love capturing their reasoning because we do look in, we look at every single LEA and what they submitted. And we read it and we share it with USBE. So. Um, once September ends, uh me and Smriti and the share with Maria and Pollux, we worked through it together. Um, we have like one to two days to quickly turn around this data and get ready to meet with USBE. And so we actually read through every single LEA. We created a report. We s- we said like, what is their October twenty five count? What are they, what are they asking for? What are their reason? And then if we decided to make an adjustment like, well, they're way off, we took off five hundred students. And this was our reason. Uh so we made adjustments as well, but tried to hold true to what the LEAs were asking for as well. So. Uh once September ends, we worked quickly. We meet with USBE within like two days after that. And we discussed everything all like, yay, which I actually think was a really good process. Um. And again, we can make modifications in that meeting as well. And we're heading into where USBE takes that data and they have the hard job of actually calculating overall total for all charter schools. Are we increasing by this percentage or are you think we're decreasing by this percentage? And we're going to give this, um, there's a CDC meeting that they know is coming up where they're going to meet with other stakeholders. This was a lot, huh, guys? Yeah, but they give scenarios like if, if we think uh charters are going to increase by one percent or two percent, five percent, or if we're going to decrease by one, two, whatever. And they actually have like, we're going to take away like this much prediction from this school and like give this much to this school. Like, they have the difficult task of like taking our data, theirs and putting it together, as you're told. So hopefully I explained that a little bit. Um so they do go to the CDC ma- meeting and they share our combined work and they give their recommendation. So for overall total percentage. Um, once um the CDC meeting is uh done, they've decided on a percentage. They let SCSP, USBE will let SCSP staff know what we've, the finalized projection was, and they give it back to us. And I input that back into UCAP. So it's in a shared place for charters to see, USBE to see. And there's reports that are just automatically generated for anyone to see. So, yeah. That's fair. So we, yeah, we started in September and we just barely finished in November. I just. Right. Um so we use different data points when combining projections. I've already talked about the LEA submissions, which are a huge thing to have. We also use a list that we have on staff that's the new charter schools that are going to open in fiscal year twenty seven, satellites and expansions. Also, like if any max enrollment increases are happening in that year as well. And then towards the end, like the second half of October, we do get um October twenty sixth data that we can quickly add if we notice like, oh, that school like, they got popular, like they gained like four hundred students, we better like up their projection before we go to CDC meeting, stuff like that. And then finally, we do, Utah does have a true up process, which we do want to estimate as close as possible. But once we do get the finalized, you know, October, like October of fall, or uh, yeah, October school year twenty seven. Once we do get that, like finalized data that comes in and we actually know what students came in, then the schools either have to return some funds or are given some funds based on like their actual versus their projected. So it evens out in the end. All that work.
I know as a charter school director, October was the magic month, you know, you're just like trying to hold on to kids, especially that, you know, I think October first count.
So this is just an example of me and Spreedy's report that we gave USBE. And again, the most important part is the notes on the right. So like the first LEA has requested a projection that sees their October 25 count. But they're pretty justified because they got approved for a large expansion and opening that school year. And so they do plan on having more students, and so. That's kinda just what it looks like. And then this is an example of USBE's percentages, percentage totals, their scenario sheet. So again, they have the tough job of balancing projections and control the final total percentage gain or loss for charters. They use our SESB report, and they also have to weigh between large LEAs and small LEAs. Cuz small LEAs, you know, get affected more than LEAs that are larger that can just handle taking away some students. And so this, this for fiscal year 27, I just wanna point out that they approved an increase of 4% overall for charter schools.
And by that, you mean they're anticipating a 4% increase in charter school enrollment?
For fiscal year 27.
Wow.
Wow. And I can kinda show you why, cuz we, we did have discussions. And looking at, you know, every LA submission and stuff, and like, if you notice right here, this 90,000 is kind of what LEAs were asking. And we're like, that's a little two-part, like, I don't think that's gonna happen. But they took it down just a snitch. But trying to stay true to what LEAs are asking.
Well, and it seems like it's in line if we look at trends.
Yeah.
And I think that's also a really important data point for us to consider.
I'm actually gonna talk about that.
Oh, okay.
And then, and then just what we're expecting during that school year, which is what we're projecting, is two new charter schools, four small expansions, and six large expansions. And then, of course, the max enrollment schools that have increased and stuff like that. I don't put that in. So this is actually the fourth consecutive year that charter schools have overall student growth. As you see on the right over there. Charters have increased by 300, 394 students just from last year. Which is a growth of about 4.15%, which is what they're expecting possibly in the following year. So, which now makes charter students around 13% of the total Utah public school population.
And Amber, that's the greatest percentage.
In a long time, like if you, if you look at that yellow.
Yeah.
It's, I don't think I can count up, but it's been a long time since we've had that high. One, two, three, four, five, six. Is that eight years? So pretty cool. And then I know, I didn't, I know that overall as a state, with October coming in, we've lost, overall with public and charters combined, we've lost about 11,500 students. So to gain students in the charter role that we're losing in the other sectors, pretty significant.
So percentage decline overall? Like year by year, just for total students in the state of Utah? What, what are we looking at? Where we see the uptick of projected 4.15, 3.24, 4.65, 1.26, what, what would the total trend?
What theirs would be?
Just the total students?
I haven't.
It would be annual decline.
No, I haven't calculated anything with it. Yeah. But we should do an enrollment report. Do something like that.
That would be really neat.
So yeah, that concludes my presentation. Exciting for charters.
It is. Amber, thank you so much. I really appreciate data people. Right where you're like jazzed about numbers, both of you, and I really do appreciate that. Questions, follow-up thoughts? You, significantly, we're talking about budget and enrollment. I mean, this to me is, this is, I really enjoy the projections. It's, you know, it's almost, we can't necessarily, you know, we don't have our crystal ball, but this definitely gives us a little bit of insight.
This is digging down deeper, and you probably don't know this, but in that the increase that we've seen, is it due to new schools or is it due to schools, existing schools that have, you know, increased, maximized or whatever, increased? So we know why the overall population is decreasing. We know it's because not as many people are having children, and, and people with children are not moving into our state. Our growth is not from families with children. But, so I just wondered if it would seem like it would be new charter schools because people, I don't know, or, or families that have children. I don't know, I just was, it's just a little more.
I know. I think someone should definitely dig into it. It'd be fun to see.
Where that's coming from, right?
When your projection for the next year takes into account new schools or expansions. But yeah, it's a, it's a good question, like, looking at the, at the growth we've had the last two or three years, how much of that is attributable to new schools?
Right.
Yeah.
We have just.
These are existing schools, are they declining? Would they be declining similar to district schools, I, you know? Given that, that trend, I don't know.
I feel like I would be guessing.
Yeah.
I think we probably look into the data, see.
Right, or now, and is that, and are, is the, are those numbers, the 300 and, or what would you say? No, it was
3,000.
3,000, 3,000 students, are those, is that a third grader leaving a district and excited about a new school or making a different choice or, right? What's, what's the, what's the, you know, just, what's pushing people to make those moves? Or is it new, is it new schools, new kids, is it our expansions?
So I wouldn't think it's top, cuz that would be, you know, with children, or I, I don't know, just yeah, wise.
Yeah.
Sure. I mean, yeah, I was thinking, I read something recently, KSL did a report. They had said that the state's overall decline was 1.7% this last year. And that specifically looking into charters. And they said that 49 charter schools experienced at least a 1% increase. And 44 charters saw an enrollment decline of at least 1%.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Well, we have, we have that, that interesting part of our law that that is, is, is good to remind us about anytime we're approving new schools, that that we can't, that our decision can't be influenced by the impact that opening a new school may have on other schools. So it's, it puts us in such an interesting position. We want to continue to authorize new schools, but we can't necessarily consider any negative impact on other schools from doing so. And I'm sure there are negative impacts, just based on that statistic, some schools are declining, even charter schools.
Yeah.
But, but I love the data, and I sure appreciate the analysis. I would encourage you to continue to dig into the data. If there's anything you see that you think should weigh on us in our, fulfilling our mission of quality authorizing. Let, let us know. This is super helpful.
Really like us to have a, have a research arm, or our state universities might wanna champion some charter research, betterment of the work across the state. I think that would be beneficial. I don't know. Amber Bassett, I think you've already picked your dissertation idea, or I?
This is just, yeah, please, kinda goes along this line, but as, as we know, charters apply for certain populations based on what they think could happen. And it would be interesting to see if they're having trouble reaching that because of these factors, you know? That would just be interesting too, and I, I don't know, that's a very in-the-details thing, but.
I think it's important for us to think about though, because we know that, I mean, in terms of the projections that we're seeing, this will only continue to be, become very present in our, our population. Thank you both so much, and I'm so glad that we were able to, were able to build this into our meetings, because we are, we are a team working together, and it's really critical that we hear all the voices.
What, what?
Yeah, please.
I, I am, my dissertation is on the selective factors that impact charters. The data is, I, I focus on high schools specifically, and I was looking at the enrollment out of a charter as well as the reasons for them to move into the traditional public space. So it's kind of both sides of the coin. But I, there's some data in there that I would love to.
Ms. Marshall, are you in school right now then?
I am. I'm finishing up my.
Fantastic. Oh, my gosh. Wow.
So I can provide a little bit of insight, at least in the charter space.
Yes.
What types of charters tend to see enrollment changes and the selective factors that are impacting those from a statistical standpoint?
Wow. That's great.
Wow. Thanks, universe. Oh. You all, I don't even know, this meeting is like, I'm just so thrilled today. And now, which is even more so, I know we, this is like one of the trainings that I know everybody just cannot wait for every year, and especially all of you that are involved in board work. We do have our annual board training for our Open Public Meeting Act and Conflict of Interest. With, we just have some form updates, so that's an annual form that we will all share, and I know we're gonna be, you know, great.
Thank you, Andrea.
Yeah, great. You can go ahead and pass that around. And then where are you doing our training today?
We have a video for ATMA, and a short conflict of interest.
Okay, sounds great.
But it's going to be.
Okay, great. Yeah, so I'm gonna turn the time over to Associate Director Stephenson, and, and after this, we'll head into lunch.
I'm gonna turn the time to you, Amber.
Oh, okay. And I think I will, after this too, we can talk just a little bit about conflict of interest, just to, oh, great. Thank you. Thanks.
You guys sound nice. I don't know why this box is there, so I'm gonna try a little time. Sure sound. Okay, come on in.
Hi, I'm Henry.
And I'm Ruby. Today, we're here to help with a training about ATMA.
As you know, this is a required yearly training. And any training you get every year can start to feel, well, boring. Hopefully with us as your guides, we can make ATMA a little more fun.
Okay, Henry, what is ATMA?
ATMA is the Open Public Meeting Act. To put it simply, ATMA requires that public business be done, be done in public. ATMA defines a meeting as the convening of a public body or specified body with a quorum present, including a workshop or an executive session. The meeting could be in person or by means of electronic communication, and is considered a meeting if it is for the purpose of discussing, receiving comments from the public about or acting upon a matter over which the public body or a specific body has jurisdiction or advisory power.
So then, what isn't a meeting?
ATMA says a meeting does not mean a chance gathering or a social gathering like a birthday party or a fancy night out.
Cheers. Can you remind us what a quorum is?
Quorum means a simple majority of the membership of a public body, unless otherwise defined by law.
What do we need to review about notices and agendas?
A notice must be posted at least 24 hours in advance of meeting, posted at public body's office, and posted on the public notice website. The agenda must be posted with notice and must be reasonably specific. For example, if I said I'm going to talk about my sister, that would not be specific enough. If I said I'm going to talk about the wonderful things my sister Ruby does, that would provide enough specificity that the general public would know what to expect.
Great example, brother.
You should note that a public body must give public notice at least once a year of its annual meeting schedule.
Let's pause and see if anyone has questions or comments. Okay, now we're back. Let's talk about minutes and recordings. Those are required, right?
Yes to both. Even though there's an audio recording, the approved written minutes will be the official record. Make sure your written minutes have the date, time, and place of meeting. Names of who is present and absent. Substance of all matters proposed, discussed, or decided recorded by individual member of each vote taken. Name of each person who is, makes a public comment, and the substance of the comment. And any other information that any member requests be entered in the meeting of record or recording.
When do minutes and audio recordings have to be posted?
Pending minutes, available to public within 30 days after the meeting. Approved minutes, posted to the public notice website within three business days of the public body's approval. Audio recordings, posted to the public notice website within three business days after the meeting.
I've really enjoyed all the virtual meeting options since 2020. Can a board just do a virtual meeting?
Public bodies may meet by phone or other electronic, means that allows participants to hear or observe communications. However, notice requirements still apply, and there must be an anchor location. If health or safety concerns still exist like they did during the early pandemic, this requirement may be waived.
What if a board has their yearly schedule posted, but an emergency comes up?
ATMA calls that in emergency meeting, these must be due to unexpected situations. An example might be a broken water line that cannot wait for the next scheduled meeting. Failure to turn in a report on time isn't an unexpected situation.
Even though it's an emergency, try to give the best notice possible. Notify all members of the public body and have a majority of the board members approve the meeting.
Let's pause here for any questions or discussions.
Now, I'm thinking we should talk about closed meetings.
Closed meetings are very important to understand. As board members, you play an important role in building and reinforcing the bonds of trust between local government and citizens. Your job is to promote the rule of law and to foster. Your job is to promote the rule of law and to foster a culture of compliance. When you perform well, you can increase the confidence in, with in local government and provide reassurance that the government is functioning, functioning within the confines of the law.
Let's remind them, can a board just close a meeting whenever they want?
No, sis, there are very few reasons a meeting can be closed. Since they've had this training each year, let's pause and see if they can name seven major reasons to close a meeting, according to Ama. There are more, but they apply to specific boards. How did they do? As a reminder, these seven major reasons to close a meeting are, one, to discuss character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual. Two, to discuss collective bargaining. Three, to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation. Four, to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property. Five, to discuss the sale of property. Six, to discuss, to discuss security personnel, devices, or systems. Seven, to investigate proceedings regarding our litigations of criminal misconduct.
Here are some helpful reminders about closed sessions. A quorum must be present. A motion to close the meeting must be made naming the specific reason for the closure. A roll call, vote must be taken. Two-thirds of the body must approve of the closed meeting.
Some of the reasons for a closed session do not require a recording, but rather a sworn statement that the purpose of the closed meeting was to discuss this issue. Others require a recording to be made, so make sure you are aware of the requirements of your purpose.
And probably the most important thing, no votes are taken in closed meetings.
Wow, Ruby, you know your stuff about closed sessions.
Henry, did you know that some things are forbidden during closed meetings?
Forbidden? What?
Yes, a board may not, may not approve anything, interview anyone, take final action, or talk about closed sessions outside of closed sessions.
Since those things are forbidden, what happens if a person or a board violates Ama?
A court can void any action in a, in violation of the law. Sometimes a violation can be fixed by discussing and taking a public vote in later meeting. However, you might have to pay court costs and attorney fees. Also, those who intentionally violate or advise violations of closed meetings provisions may be found guilty of a Class B misdemeanor, which could lead to six months in jail or a one thousand dollar fine.
Um, yikes.
Don't worry, we've got this.
You're right, maybe we could recap of, with a few simple closed session reminders.
One, closed session is a choice. If you know the purpose is not allowable, speak up.
Working out, two, working out differences and finding ways to get along with one another is board business. Not closed session business.
Three, a performance evaluation is different from a goal-setting session. Set goals in an open meeting.
Four, the agenda is no place for misdirection. Make sure your board is being transparent.
Five, confidentiality is key. What is discussed in a closed session stays in a closed session.
Thanks, sis. That helps. I feel much better.
Well, I think that about wraps everything up.
Wait, don't you think it'd be better if we end with a game?
Actually, yes, what are you thinking?
Board members, can you fill in the blank? Make sure you give blank our notice.
The answer is twenty-four.
Your agenda items need to be blank specific. Closed meetings are only for blank purposes.
The answer was allowable.
Receive training on Ama blank time per year.
One.
Approved minutes must be posted within blank days.
The answer is three.
When in doubt, consult your blank counsel.
Legal. Wow, great job, board members.
I can tell this is a very smart group.
Thanks for doing Ama training with us. See you next year.
Board open meeting, and I, for many years have never seen that.
Much more pleasant. Yeah, it is.
Thank you for participating in your Ama training. Um, and then we'll just pull up uh, the conflict of interest. Um, this comes directly from your board bylaws. Um, and board, it is on page three of your board bylaws, uh, section five. Uh, so just uh, quickly going over that. Um, your conflict of interest coming your board bylaws, uh, talks about, A, the disclosure of conflicts. Um, a charter board member must disclose any conflict of interest before participating in board or committee discussion of votes. And if a member fails to disclose a conflict, the chair may address to be apparent conflict and take any appropriate action, including moving to the next agenda item. Uh, holding expertise in a topic does not inherently constitute a conflict of interest, unless there's a financial gain or exchange of favors. Um, and members should disclose a relevant expertise openly. Uh, however, their knowledge may serve as an asset to board discussion. Uh, as far as closed session conflicts though, um, a member with a conflict of interest shall either be excused from a closed session uh, related to that conflict, or refrain from participating in that portion of the discussion. And the board chair may excuse that member as appropriate to maintain, excuse me, maintain transparency and integrity. Um, and then as far, uh, section C is that annual disclosure, and that was what Andrea passed out to everyone. A member shall sign a conflict of interest and ethic statement annually. And then if ever there's a change in your employment, uh, status, uh, or residential interest or ownership status, um, then it would also be appropriate to sign a new conflict of interest and ethic statement. Uh, the things that should be disclosed within that, uh, statement are any employment ownership or directorship, uh, in an an LEA here in Utah, or an entity that receives public education funds. And then any employment ownership or directorship in an entity, uh, that completes the contracts, grants, or agreements awarded by the board. And, and then as far as, uh, IND, the public disclosure, uh, the conflict, uh, interest and ethic statement is considered public information under, uh, the Government Records Access Amendment. Um, so if there are questions, we're happy to address those. Uh, otherwise, uh, that completes those two items of boarding.
Excellent. Any questions? Please take a moment, since we have the time, if you would, uh, go ahead and complete your conflict of interest form. If it is going to take, if, if you need some more time, you can definitely take that at lunch. Please be sure to return them to Andrea, uh, at, by the time lunch is over, if asked. I love that video. So, thank you. Thank you to children for taking the time to do that for us. Uh, Maria, also, so, may I have travel policy, um, from here as well?
Um, staff member, Lisa.
Thank you.
Well, yes, I get to talk to you about the super exciting topic of state travel policy, so get ready for the rush. All right, so I just put the policy up on the board. I didn't make it a, a, like a presentation kind of thing. And so you could just see what the policy looks like. Like, there are about fourteen or seventeen policies. We're gonna quickly go through about fourteen of them. And so we'll get started. Okay, so the first one is, if you're planning a trip, especially out of state, well, actually an out-of-state trip, then you need to make sure that you put in a travel request through Concur. And then if you are actually doing in-state trip, you do not need to put in the travel request, and so you don't need to worry about that. This is just for your out-of-state travel. And you have, need to make sure that you are putting in each expected expense for the travel request into Concur. So let's say you're going to a conference, you're gonna have, maybe you'll, you'll definitely have a flight generally, um, parking at that airport, ground transportation, those things. So when you're doing your request, you wanna make sure you're looking for all of those things that, and making sure that they're in that travel request. Andrea does a great job of getting most of that in for us, but she's gonna be gone for a while, so we may have to think this through on our own. All right, um, and then travel request, uh, also. Oh, yes, also, if you're traveling, um, and you're getting ready for it, you can't do any bookings that are gonna commit funds until after the travel request is approved, because we don't wanna have to worry about going out back and trying to get those funds. All right, and then they must be approved by the appropriate authority. Who the appropriate authority is, is gonna depend on your position. Um, but they do need to be approved, approved, and then also, um, they need to be approved, approved, whether you're gonna be reimbursed by the state or not. So if, whether, regardless of whether a third party is paying or something, you do need to get that request in, and you need to make sure all those items are in there. And that is true for non-state employees as well. There needs to be a, an approved travel request. However, non-state employees when go through Concur, they have forms for them. Uh, for in-state travel, a traveler must receive either a verbal or written approval from their supervisor before the trip. And agencies of the government, operations of finance, they'll, they'll, um, use the approval of the reimbursement as evidence that the trip was actually approved by your supervisor, so. That would be fine, just do that, okay? A travel request must be closed in Concur. I'm not actually sure what that means, but um, I'm sure Andrea's making sure that gets done. So just to keep that in mind, again, when she's gone, we can figure that out for you. Next, we're going to talk through reimbursement requests. So the travelers are reimbursed for their business expenses, and they must only be reimbursed if they're necessary and reasonable expenses directly related to your business travel. Um, they must be submitted through Concur if you're considered an employee, and if you're a board member, you're considered an employee. Um, and they need to include, and they also need to include expenses that have been paid for with a P card or on what's called a lodge card. So if you have, um, airfare that's always paid for on a large lodge card, so would still need to show up on your reimbursement request, only it would show that you're not getting reimbursed for it, it's being paid to that, that large fraud card. And that's, um, that's a state level thing. Okay. Uh, necessary, you need to have the necessary documents attached to your reimbursement request. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, I'd also, you, your, your reimbursement, you need to get it in within sixty days of the end date of your travel. So just keep that in mind, we, we had another late one this year. So let's try and make sure that you're within that sixty days. Okay, now let's talk about the necessary documentation. You must attach sufficient documentation to each of your reimbursement requests, um, except for your incidental and your meals, because those are just per diem, so there's no reason for you to submit those receipts. Also, make sure those, that the receipts include things like the items that, or services that you received, the merchant, the dates, the items were purchased, and the services you received, for the, or the services were received, uh, quantities, cost of each item, total cost, and then also, this is an important line, proof of payment. The actual receipt needs to show that you paid for the item before you're going to be reimbursed for it. You also need to include, if you have booked a flight, a hotel, a rental car, et cetera, um, you need to include your travel itinerary with your, uh, reimbursement request. And that, that would just usually shows up on your receipt itself, but make sure that those things are on there. Um, if you use your own car, you need to document your miles. Uh, and then you, like, if you use your personal vehicle for state business, then you need to document the mileage. And you must use the mileage calculator in Concur, it's just a little button when you're putting in mileage that you'll see. And that is what you use to document what your mileage was. And then also, you're supposed to, if you attend a seminar, conference, convention, training, or other similar meeting, or meeting, then you need to make sure that the registration material is on there. And it should include the registration cost, the dates, locations, schedule, conference hotel rates, if they're available, and then the provided bills. Okay, and then approvals, written documentation of approvals required, oh, so this is good. So if you have an expense in there, and a good example is, um, if you're at a conference, if you get a rental vehicle, then there's another approval that you need to receive before you go on a trip to be able to rent, um, the car. And so you need to make sure in your reimbursement request, you're including that information in there as well, showing that you've had that approval. If you, you need to have sufficient, uh, documentation, like we said. If you find for some reason that you have a missing receipt, there is an option for an affidavit that you can use through Concur if that happens. Uh, the expectation of the, the state is you do everything possible that you can to get that, um, if, that receipt, and if you can't, then this is an option. Again, um, they want you to though document what you did to try and get the receipt. And, um, they also, if you're using this on a consistent basis, that's gonna be an issue too. So make sure that you're doing your best, very best, to make sure you have all that documentation. All right, um, approvers must, and this, this applies to me, I'm an approver. So when I approve something, I have to, there's this little box that pops up and it says, does this follow state policy? And if I'm gonna click that box, I really want it to be true. So it's important that, I need to make sure that all your, everything that we've talked about is in that request, and and it follows the policy. If there's something missing, then I will send it back to you and let you know what's missing and try to get it. If, if an approver finds, um, something that isn't following policy, then I would again notify you that that doesn't follow policy. And then as a traveler, you can notify, um, the executive director or designated in writing about how it didn't follow policy. And then he can, the director can just choose whether or not they're, they're gonna approve that for payment. Okay, next, meals and incidental expenses. Uh, travelers are reimbursed per diem for meals and incidental expenses. There's a GSA website is what it's called. If you ever wanna go look where the per diem is, you can go there to look at it. It's different depending on where you are in the country, or sometimes even in the state. Uh, the meals and incidental per diem rate includes your breakfast, your lunch, your dinner, tips and taxes, and incidental expenses. Your incidental expenses would be laundry, services, fees and tips, giving to porters, baggage carriers, and hotel staff. And on the first day of traveler, the traveler is reimbursed for seventy-five percent of the per diem rate. Travelers aren't reimbursed for meals provided at conferences, conventions, trainings, or meetings, and travelers must deduct those meals from their reimbursement request. So if you are attending a conference, there's, um, a little, there's a place in Concur where you can choose, you can click a box to say, hey, I've got a lunch taken care of, or I've got a dinner taken care of. Uh, a complimentary meal provided for, by a hotel or an airline does not count. Uh, a complimentary meal provided for by a hotel or an airline does not count as a meal, so you don't need to do any reductions for that. And then travelers are also reimbursed seventy-five percent per diem for meals and incidental expenses on day trips that are longer than twelve hours. You may, if you have a P card, which I know just a couple of us do, um, you could pay for, you can't actually pay for your meal with a P card because it's a per diem based thing rather than a reimbursement kind of um situation there. So that's why you can't use the P card. Uh, paying for a business meal. A traveler may use their P card or a personal credit card to pay for a business meal. Business meals are considered what's called a group gathering, and they must be approved and documented correctly. There's a whole form for that. Uh, and the required, the required documents need to be attached to the traveler's reimbursement request. So if you were to do a business meal for somebody, when you get that receipt back from the restaurant, you wanna make sure that you are not just um getting the one that shows your credit card slip and how much you paid, right? You want the one that shows everything that was ordered. And and part of that is like there are certain, like alcohol is not allowed to be paid for by the state. So they wanna make sure that's not on there. That's part of the reasoning for that. And just make sure that um you're being consistent within those per diem amounts, because they do apply to business meals as well. Um, if the traveler does use a personal credit card, they are reimbursed the actual cost of the per diem unless they received an exception beforehand for it to be more. Lodging. Uh, travelers are eligible for lodging reimbursement when the destination is fifty miles or more from their personal residence. It was seventy-five for a while, they took it back to fifty, which is next. Uh, lodging is considered within per diem, because we do have to use those per diem rates for lodging as well. So it's considered within per diem if the base rate without the taxes and fees is at or below the per diem. And you are not reimbursed for any upgraded lodging accommodations. A traveler may pay for lodging with their own with their own P card or a personal P card. Expenses paid for with a P card are not reimbursed, but as we said before, they still need to show up on the reimbursement request. And P card holders may not use their P card to pay for another employee's lodging. Staying in a hotel. Travelers may stay at a conference hotel when the room rate is within three times the per diem rate. Excuse me, travelers must book a conference hotel room either directly through the hotel, through the booking tool in Concur, or through the state travel office. If you're booking a non-conference hotel, which any like if you're just doing an L and S, stay within the state or something, that would be considered like a non-conference hotel. You're not using it for a conference, basically. The traveler must book the non-conference hotel room at the best available rate within three times the per diem through either the booking tool in Concur or through the state travel office. If there are no hotels in the area within three times the per diem, the traveler must contact the state travel office to book that room. So basically, the difference is you wouldn't go through Concur in that situation, you would go through the state travel office. Um, travelers book hotels according to the guidelines that we just talked about. Um, they're reimbursed for the actual cost of the night. If you don't follow the guideline sections, then travelers are reimbursed the actual cost per night up to the per diem per diem. But then they do get the tra- the taxes and other mandatory fees reimbursed on top of that as well. And travelers may choose to book a more expensive hotel, but they are not reimbursed for that extra cost. Alright, use of personal vehicles for state travel business or state business. Um, travelers are may approve the use, our agencies may approve the use of personal vehicles for state business, but they should use the state fleet vehicles or rental vehicles when possible, just to reduce personal liability risk and mileage reimbursement for personal vehicles. Travelers are reimbursed the state mileage rate for mileage related to state business. I think it's about forty-two cents per mile rate. Travelers may use the mileage, must, sorry, travelers must use the mileage calculator in Concur to report mileage driven. Um, only the owner of the vehicle may be reimbursed for mileage regardless of the number of people in the vehicle. Travelers are reimbursed for driving to and from the airport if you have a uh conference or something that you're going to or anything else that you're doing on state business, actually. And then travelers who are driven to the airport by a friend or family member are reimbursed for two round trips to and from the airport. So they get it going both ways, right? And also, when you return, you get to the to and from. Okay, travelers again must provide all the documentation that we've talked about when they're doing this. Um, their lodging, or their vehicle. Okay, rental vehicles. Booking rental vehicles. Travelers must rent vehicles if approved in writing before this address. So this is like one of those exceptions where you have to get extra approvals. Approval may may be done through a travel request or email. Travelers must rent vehicles used for state business in their own name. And travelers must must rent vehicles through a contracted rental company by using the booking tool in Concur or the state travel. Travelers must reserve the type of vehicle based on the business needs, and they need to need a vehicle if staying at an out-of-state, oh, travelers may not rent a vehicle if staying at an out-of-state conference hotel, except in certain circumstances. And a request for the rental vehicle of an out-of-state conference hotel must be approved in writing by the executive director or designated before the traveler departs. In the request, the traveler must explain why renting the car is necessary. For an in-state travel, agencies are billed directly for rental vehicles if an out-of or out-of-state travel. Travelers must pay for the vehicle with their own P card or a personal credit card and expenses paid for with a P card. Again, they're not reimbursed, but they need to be on that travel request. The state's rental vehicle contracts include insurance coverage within the fifty states and the District of Columbia at no additional cost and with no deductible. So um if the contracted vendor is not available for travelers, they must book a vehicle and they must book a vehicle from a non-contracted vendor. Then the traveler must purchase insurance offered by the rental company. And in this case, the traveler will be reimbursed the cost of that insurance. And travelers who rent rent vehicles out of out-of-state travel are reimbursed the actual cost of the rental. And travelers are not reimbursed for size or model upgrades made when picking up the rental vehicle. Travelers are reimbursed the actual cost of the fuel unless they choose the prepaid fuel option when picking up the rental vehicles. Travelers are not reimbursed for the fuel purchased from the rental company. So you definitely wanna make sure you go into a gas station to get that fuel. Air travel. Um, the airline tickets and booking fees mu- must be charged to the lodge card as we talked about before. Travelers can change commercial air reservations if the change is approved in writing by the division director or agency equivalent of the division director and made through the Concur or state travel office. The traveler must explain why the change is necessary. The traveler must attach evidence of the approval to their to their reimbursement request. However, if the change fee is seventy-five dollars or less, a traveler can change the flight for the day of the the day of departure without getting approval or contacting the state travel office. And travelers must not voluntarily change flights when flights are overbooked due to potential issues with risk management. Travelers may be reimbursed for, um, like I've lost a page, a reimbursement of air. Here we go. Travelers may be reimbursed reimbursed for mileage driving to and from the airport. And we talked about that in our earlier travel policy. Airport parking fees, airline wifi baggage fees, and TSA pre-check fees. However, TSA pre-check fees must be approved by the executive director. Travelers who choose to book flights for state business using their own rewards points, personal credits or personal vouchers instead of the lodge card are not reimbursed for the cost of the flight. So you wanna make sure it's getting worked through the travel tool or the state office. Um, travelers are not reimbursed for priority seating or seat upgrades charges except under rare circumstances. And a request for a priority seating or seating upgrade must be approved in writing by the executive director before the traveler departs. And you must explain why you need the upgrade. Vouchers or credits given to a traveler for involuntary flight changes are considered the property of the traveler. And loyalty programs like airline frequent flyer programs, which give travelers discounts or incentives, are also considered the property of the traveler. And required documentation, as always, must be attached to your reimbursement request. Ground transportation. Travelers should use their own account to book a ride share. Travelers are reimbursed the actual cost of the ground transportation used for state business. You aren't reimbursed for ride share upgrades unless there is a documented business purpose. And you must uh choose a mode of transportation that best meets your business needs, and you reimburse the actual cost of your transportation. Tips for ground transportation are reimbursed if shown on the original itemized receipt. And travelers um travelers are reimbursed the actual cost of the tip up to twenty percent of the total fare, including taxes and fees. However, if a twenty percent tip resulting in an amount less than five dollars, a traveler may tip up to five dollars. Um, and in that situation, you are reimbursed up to the five dollars. Ride share receipts must document the starting and ending location of your trip. Conference and training uh conference, yeah, conference and training registration fees. Travelers must receive permission from the supervisor to register for in-state conference. Conferences or training. Travelers must receive permission from the executive director or designated to register for out-of-state conference, and permission may be given through email or written documentation. You should pay for the conference or training registrations. Um, travelers should pay for conference or training registrations in advance, and you may pay for a conference or training with a personal P card or personal credit card or a P card. And P card holders may use their P card to pay for other travelers' registration as well. Perking, we're in this homestretch, guys. Okay, travelers are reimbursed for the actual cost of their parking if the parking was necessary for official business and the use of the private or rental vehicle was approved. And parking related to air traveler, travelers are reimbursed for the actual cost up to the airport's lowest daily parking rate for each day of parking. How long are you going to be here, darling?
I was hoping you were gonna talk about plane. I gotta tell you about uh it's renting the the uh state plane.
State plane.
Yeah. I'm just being, I'm just being.
Yeah, I thought it was fun.
Um, Lisa, thank you. And I can ask Marie just to send a link to all of that to us, just so we have it on the ready. Um, and all of it makes sense and.
Yes, it is in the bullet work folder. I did put it there for you.
Okay, great, wonderful, wonderful.
Okay, alright, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I know that was.
No, thank you. Um, and through my, you know, through my work at Weber, we also use Concur, and it is phew, I'll tell ya. But um, you know, we wanna be responsible, so I do appreciate that. And um, for just, and I know we're gonna break here for lunch, but we do have two conferences on our radar, so this is very applicable in terms of traveling. Uh, there is the uh, we have the uh the conference in April. No, it's no, which, June, June, it's the national conference, but wasn't there another? Oh, no, a game isn't happening this year, no.
Hold please.
Okay, we just know that, I'm glad that we're talking about this because we do want to travel together um in for conferences and learning opportunities. And we've also talked about, I know it's on my radar, to try and travel more to visit our schools within the state. So I do appreciate that reminder of in-state travel, because I'm hoping that will become more relevant for us as we wanna get out and about. Okay, so with that, lunch is ready, and lunch is next door. We are scheduled to have lunch until one. Please take that time if you need just some personal time, but we'll have plenty of time to eat. And then when we return, is really just a uh a uh an opportunity for us to to debrief our time at the NASCA conference. And so we we don't have a jam-packed afternoon, so you can kind of keep that in mind for your own personal afternoon planning.
So upcoming out-of-state travel opportunities, uh, April is uh the institute's annual spring conference in Grand Rapids, Michigan.
Okay.
Um, and then the National Charter School Conference is in June uh in New Orleans. And then there'll be NACA again in October.
Okay.
Um, and then we, of course, have the associations conference in June as well.
Yeah.
And the charter networks conference usually in July. Um, and the great news is Andrea will be back by then for one of those.
Right, because I am so appreciative of that you're my concurrent liaison. Alright, so uh, in fact, we can set a follow-up, just maybe those conference sites, Marie, if you wouldn't mind sending those out to the board just so everybody can put those dates just on your radar. Uh, and uh and we have just found it so beneficial, as you'll hear after lunch, just that learning that we uh we get to have with what we gain.
Marie, can you say?
Let's showcase you. Yeah, that would be great. Okay, it's lunchtime to um everyone online. We'll see you at one o'clock and uh just pause our. So.
Well, my life will work on back and.
Right.
The meeting's having an informal.
Yes.
Formal last part of our meeting.
Yes.
Go on now, we'll get the zoom back. I think Al is on. Okay, great. Welcome back, everyone. It was a wonderful lunch and I just really do appreciate the conversation that we get to have during those times. We originally had talked about in our executive committee about meeting, about having this meeting be from nine to noon today. But we decided to, just with newborn members coming and just how much we value that, the conversation that we have during that time. I think we decided we stretched it out a little bit. So thank you all so much for that. We have this last piece this afternoon. Yeah, it makes me think about, I was, when I was here, I was listening to a podcast about the importance of bringing slow hobbies back into your life in a fast-paced world. And you all know, remember March, where you'll hear me talk, I've been on a sourdough journey for the last couple of years. I have, oh, I love it. And I think about the patience, the care, and it is such a slow hobby. And I think it's important. And so I guess in the spirit of us, sometimes we don't need to rush our meetings, even though it feels like we're jumping to some, whatever's next. But there is such great importance in us slowing down. Actually, I thought about an hour for lunch. Oh, that is wonderful, especially if, especially if no one ever asks at your life, you're kidding, I get like.
I know.
Right. So, okay, so let's go ahead and we'll jump in so we can aim to, we will conclude when we're done our reflections, if not by two. We had several staff and board members that attended the National Authorizers Conference in Houston. This was our, this was my second time attending this conference, but I think, or you had talked about, this was your eighth or no? Seven time attending this conference. So this is a longstanding conference. It's the, just, it is specifically, I thank you so much. It's a, it was a gathering of, of the charter school authorizers in this, in the, in the nation. So not, not necessarily charter school educators, there are directors, but really folks that are in roles like ours that are doing this work. So we just, we wanted an opportunity, we can bounce around and we can, and I know there's a couple folks aren't here, we can share that or we can also email their reflections out too, based on how we would like to do that. But we can share our insights and our reflections and we just would like to hear just a little bit from each person that had a time to go. We feel, one, it's important because it documents that learning and potentially helps us generate ideas on how we want to move forward. It also, I think, is a great message to, to our community that helps fund this learning that we're actually, when we attend these conferences, we're, we're making good use of our time and resources. So with that, I share, can we start with you?
Yeah.
And then I think we'll just kind of just, you know, then we're coming around this again.
Yeah, for sure. So, so each time I go to NACA, I always try to find seminars on, oh man, I can't remember that guy's name. It'll come to me. There's, there's, there's one person in particular who has put a lot of work into putting, he, he's the one who put a lot of work into the capacities of charter school founding teams, that, that document they came out with by, I don't know, five, six years ago. And there's always a session or two that he puts on, focused on vetting the founding teams of charter schools. And, and so there were a couple of different sessions that I went to this year on capacity interviews. And, and I've got some great, just kind of, kind of model, what would you call it, material from NACA, just on the model capacity interview. And it's really, it's really helpful stuff. And, and I've tried to model that this last while as we have new school applications, new proposals and applications as they come in. Much of the capacity interview, I think, is handled by our staff behind the scenes as you work with these schools as they're developing their applications. But a lot of it happens when they come in and meet with us. And there, there were some examples of that when we, when we had the proposals a couple of meetings ago. We had some folks come in who were very well-prepared, who clearly had a capacity to their board that was adequate to drive a school. And we had some other examples where it wasn't even close. But that to me was really important. So I spent a lot of time just thinking through that when I was at the, at this event. One of the things that they added or they suggested, and I wasn't real keen on this, was in these capacity interviews, having an opportunity for, as they called it, challenge scenarios. You really wanna, you wanna push this new board and, you know, throw some hypotheticals out there for them and just kind of see how they react to it. And I wasn't real keen on that. But as these new school applications come in, what we can do is really focus on the capacity of the board when they're here in front of us by asking appropriate questions, seeing how they work together, seeing how, seeing whether it's just one person who's really driving everything and everyone else is just eye candy or whatever. The goal is to make sure that they have a strong board. If they don't have a strong board, I mean, that really is, is one of the key indicators of success or lack of success for the school. So, so that was big for me. And I could circulate some of this material, which I think is really helpful, from NACA about questions that we can ask, things we can look for in these capacity interviews. So I could circulate that. This is more, more big picture, putting aside just the concept of approving schools. When we had our 25 and 25 celebration, we had Krieger Rausch and Daryl Cobb vote, comment, speak. And they both spoke at NACA. And Daryl Cobb, I took notes from this presentation. And then when they came and spoke to us, 25 and 25, and he said exactly the same thing. Points were identical. And that's because they're that good. They're that good. So I just want to reiterate a few things that Daryl Cobb said that I think are really important. And I'd like to throw this out here for the board and for the staff and, and see if we might engage you to explore and strategize about how maybe we can be better about this as a board because we can only cover so much in our board meetings that we have. You're, you're, you're full time, you're fully engaged. And we trust you, we have confidence in you as a team to strategize about things that are important to us. You know what our mission is, you know what our vision is, it's in a document. But I love the idea of cutting you loose and seeing what ideas you can come up with as, as we have things that, that are priorities for us. So I'll go back to that. But Daryl Cobb's, his three, his three commitments to guide the charter school movement. First, excellence. Second, equity. Third, is what he calls the special sauce. And so just going through those on excellence. And this is all in line with some thoughts that Clint put to paper that we probably don't even have time to cover now. I would suggest just emailing that out to the.
That's what I.
The board and, but not just to the board. I think that should go to our whole team.
That sounds great.
Clint had some great thoughts and I think you should all read it and consider it. So first on excellence, he said, we have to double down on results. Families deserve excellent options, not just more options. So we have to, we have to always strive for excellence. And that's not just about the data, but, but, but it includes that. We have to strive for excellence. Second, he mentioned equity. So success that isn't for all students is not really success. We need to educate all of our students. And, and that I suppose goes to, well, it goes to a number of things. We can look at it in terms of our portfolio. What are we doing in building out our portfolio so there's sufficient options for everyone? And what are we doing to make sure that in our schools, all students are focused on so they can all rise up? And then his third point, his special sauce, he gave his example of working at McDonald's and making lots of Big Macs. And then his third point, his special sauce, he gave his uh example of working at McDonald's and making lots of Big Macs. Um, a- and, and this is what I want to end on. He says that we need to try to seek out the best of of what our schools are doing and what they can do. Uh, the best of academic achievement, the best of relationships, uh, and find and identify uh in those schools what, what the special sauce is. And this, this goes to these points. And, and this is what I'd love to just throw out there for the staff, consider for our team, I prefer that word to the staff, that just sounds kind of generic. Um. How to identify high-performing schools and replicate them. I feel like we don't really do that super effectively. I think we've got, we've got good, we have a good system in place for high-performing schools to come back to us and expand or create satellites. That's great. And we've got a whole bunch of those that we've authorized just recently. And I have so much confidence in all those schools, but but at the same time, uh, and this goes back to what we talked about a little earlier in today's meeting. What are we doing to really identify what's innovative or what's working really well in our schools and, and replicate it? I don't know that we're doing that as well as we possibly can. And I'd love your ideas as our team uh to help us as a board figure out how this, this important and aspirational goal that we talk about all the time, it's in our mission, our vision. How can we really do this more effectively? You know these schools, you know them very, very well. Brennan, I know you're in these schools, you spend a lot of time with them, understanding what that special sauce is. I think you've got a good handle on it. Just similar to you, I know you all do. Um. What can, what can we do more effectively as the state charter school board to identify that special sauce, identify what's working, and figure out, figure out how to replicate it? I'd love your thoughts on it. We don't have time to share it today, but I'd love to have you, Marie, and Paul and your team just give some, give some energy to that. Um. Anyway, the last, the last point that I drew from, from Daryl Cobb that, that hit me is um and, and this is right in line with our mission of supportive oversight, is working with schools that are working and helping them grow.
Hmm.
And I think we do that very, very well. So, so those are the thoughts I have. I'm sorry, I was a little discombobulated. I've got lots more notes, but I wanted to at least uh hit the high points, but but that to me is the, the biggest thing. I'd love for us to be able to do better. How can we replicate what's going well? I don't know that it's sufficient to just have a spotlight in a board meeting. Um.
Hmm.
I don't know, that really is going to replicate anything. It may be inspiring.
Hmm.
And give us cause for celebration, which is terrific. I love that. But
Hmm.
What can we do to, to replicate what's working really well? It, it just seems that so often we get I, I don't mean to sound too negative about it, but we, we kind of get the same old applications. And um I, I'd love to be able to replicate what we do well without stymying the innovation from new schools that we, of course, invite, appreciate.
Hmm.
Anyway, that's it, that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. Yeah, Daryl Cobb was definitely inspiring. And as you're talking about that, I think we do, we switch from the secret sauce to the special sauce and as we have those conversations to really make it known and then um. Marie, we'll talk to Paul a little bit more about that and how we can put that into action. Betty.
My first uh NASCOM conference, um I was really moved by our keynote speaker, Mary Ann Schulte, her shoe, I believe, from um the Texas, I have it written here. Um, the Texas Education Agency, it just reaffirmed to me all that I've worked on with families from partnerships and still um on the steering committee of our Utah Coalition for Community Schools. And so everything that she was talking about, I'm like, yep, check, 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 you know, and I would love to see our charter schools have something like that. So when we went to I'm getting, the, the name of the school that we went to that's up against the mountains by Soldier Hollow, I thought it was, what is it?
Soldier Hollow.
No, it's, it's the one
The Utah
Like Soldier Hollow to go down.
By the
Oh my gosh. I had it at the conference and now I forgot when we met it.
It's like just Walden.
Walden, to Walden. So when we walked out of work for eating, we have this wonderful space. And I asked, do you guys use this as a community school, you know, and she's like, no, not really. But I could totally see, you know, you could have meetings that were parents and have teachers teaching them how to teach their kids. And I just totally saw a whole how they could utilize that space, you know? It just, every time I go to a school, I'm like, how wonderful it would be to have some community schools involved in their charter schools, because she is right, you know, if we have those, it's not just about giving them resources, it's not just about giving them food, it's about helping their parents understand how to move their child along through school. You know, how is it, like, maybe they have a first grader and they need help on phonics. As a parent, I'm gonna teach your mom, I'm gonna teach that. So you have them, you know, working together side by side with teachers. And some incidences, you have, you know, some workshops where the kids are actually teaching their student, their parents. Like, look, mom, this is what we learned. And so, and it is work. I mean, the teacher has to work with these students to get it to that point, but the kids are just so, you, you just see them shine and they're proud and I'm teaching my parents, you know, it's that kind of like just that side-by-side work with the parents, with the students, with the teachers, with the administrator, the administration, so that parents feel welcomed in the school. Parents feel like, you know, I can come in, I can come and volunteer a couple of hours at my kid's school. You know, we have a fundraiser, I want to be the person that's in charge of it. So it takes a lot of takes a lot of, a lot of work off of the teacher's shoulders, because we have parents that are willing and wanting. And, and they're, they're able to come in and they feel like they belong in that school.
Hmm.
So when I, when I was listening to her and I'm like, yes, 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 I didn't know that. It works, you know, um. And so I just feel like, I'm glad that Leveraged Ed is part of, you know, our community, um because I've worked with West Ed before and I just just everything, just having partnerships, I believe, and really having partnerships help, help spring the schools along.
Hmm.
Because of the communities also involved, the community is invested. And I, I just, I was, I was just really enthralled by her. I thought that was just like so amazing
Hmm.
um that they actually were coming out. And then I went to a different session where Rhode Island, I believe, and they were focusing, I think we talked about this, you know, focusing on um kids that were in foster care. I know that's, that's a big lift, so I'm not exactly sure what secret sauce is there, but I mean, just showing that if you, if you love the kids, they, they just work. And so that's what I thought. I, I was just so like pumped up when I came back from the conferences, because it just, it really reaffirmed what I've done, the work that I've done. And then the same like art, the Utah Coalition, they want us, they want charter schools, you know? We're just trying to figure out how fit is, but you know, just you know, me speaking for our charter schools, but it's like, we need to get the work, you know, we need to like get, get in there and just kind of figure out how to get that incorporated in our charter schools.
Awesome. I'm so glad you were able to go, Betty.
I was too. I was really, I was, it was great, so.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing.
Uh, all right, for me, um, I was also inspired by Harold. Okay, you know, I've got. Um, but my biggest takeaway is that I'm really proud to say that I worked on the same charter school work.
Hmm.
Because I think the work that we are doing, um, our schools fit a niche in our state, but it's charters as a whole. Um, but the other idea that all students can learn and that we need to hold our schools accountable so that they are doing their mission and can serve the millions of their students. I think the same idea, like Vice Chair said, then. But it's, it's important to raise the bar for everybody.
Hmm.
So that all the students in all of our school are giving a great contribution. And I was really happy to present and plus to Marie.
Yeah.
That was pretty cool.
Right on. Thanks. Well, and I will say, um, I appreciate you sharing what you learned. And also to the both of you for being willing to represent and present information of how we are partnering with other organizations um to, to help us elevate what's happening in the state. So I know that takes effort and uh and courage to, to step out in front.
Can I comment on that just briefly? I meant to say this and I, I spaced because there's so many other things I wanted to talk about. So just, just for everyone's benefit, um. So, so Amy had a great opportunity to be front center at a presentation with Leveraged Ed, this organization that deals with nonprofits that provides all these incredible resources. And we were kind of the poster child for uh this collaboration we've had with them. And I've, I've, we've worked with them, I mean, I met all of them a year ago, had no idea they were doing this for free.
Yeah.
This was crazy.
Yeah.
Um, but that was awesome to see Amy up there working with them, with all these other folks watching. And then to have Marie represented. Uh, and, and that was fantastic about this mentoring program that we've been able to put in place that just sounds amazing. It sounds so incredibly effective. So I love that our team was front and center at this, at this national event with people from all over the country showing off in an excellent way uh about our capacity and sort of things that we're doing here in Utah. It was fantastic. So job well done.
On that, Marie, how about that passing too? That would be great.
Thank you. Um, I also have notes from Dr. Kramer, um, that he asked if I could read them. Is that okay? Would you prefer those to be sent out?
Well, it depends on how, I, it depends on how long you are, you know, if you feel like.
Pretty short, and, and I
Okay, perfect. That sounds great. Sounds great.
Okay, um, so uh what struck with him from the conference, um, he said he was most struck by the generosity of our board, uh giving their time, energy, and resources uh to attend, learn, and make us better as an authorizer. Uh, they're so generous to our own group, and in one instance even provided dinner for another group, an act that perfectly reflected their spirit of service and leadership. Um, uh, I will add, uh, you know, what else, uh, just kind of speaking to uh what's already been brought up, but it was fun. It's, it's my seventh NACSA. Um, and it was fun to be able to, to be there and, and to, to get to speak at a conference and um, we were able to bring one of our school leaders out with us as well. Um, and to get to engage with him in a, a different opportunity and have him even by our side uh while we were presenting, um, I think it was really rewarding.
Uh-huh.
Um, the next uh one, uh, was there an insider resource that felt really relevant? Um, Dr. Kramer said, uh, the session on community resources, supporting authorizers and LEA stood out. It offered a well-organized list of supports, who to contact, how to access them, and practical tools that we can use immediately. Um, I really also liked the one about accountability is not the enemy. And it really talked about um leaning into the how we do the work um versus just uh the why or the what. Um, and I think that that has been um, you know, a really powerful change uh that we have made and I, you know, continue to make. And uh they talked about, you know, protecting our, our mission in a politicized environment. Um, and really making sure that we're staying anchored in, in that space uh as our environment is constantly shifting around us. Um, another question was, was there anything that challenged or respected or sparked new thinking? Uh, he said, uh, the discussions around school closure challenged to rethink differently. Uh, many used the term ramp down, uh framing it as necessary but supportive process uh when done with care and respect. Um, I know he and I have had some conversations about that since then. Um, I think that will continue to challenge uh that thinking. And, you know, we ramped schools up, uh, so what does a ramp down look like? Um, also, just the second one, uh, a lot of the federal uh happenings, I think, uh really sparked a lot of thinking about the ways that we engage within that legislative work. Um, uh, how might we learn, how we serve schools? Uh, uh, Dr. Kramer said the conference reinforced that we must stay engaged in shaping policy um from statute to board rule to our own frameworks. Uh, Dr. Jim Gunner from NCSI emphasized our opportunity to lead and help shape the charter ecosystem in Utah. Um, I'll just second that uh with Dr. Kramer there. Um, now the last one, uh, was what was in areas of curiosity you'd like to explore further? Uh, he said, uh, the sessions led by uh Marie and Amy were by far the highlight of the conference for me. Uh, so it was a little awkward to read. Uh, they were professional, articulate, and showcased the strength of our work. Especially the school, the school mentoring program and our partnership with Leveraged Ed. Uh, like to build on what we're already doing and expand into new areas of support for schools and boards. Thank you to our board for your generosity of time, talent, and treasure. It was a privilege to lead and represent the state charter school board together and exciting to see Utah recognized as a leader in the work ahead. Um, and so, yeah, what uh other areas of curiosity that I had, um, would um, yeah, just, I guess, continuing to adapt our leadership and ensure that um, you know, we, we stay evolving as an authorizer. Um, and really uh continue to lead our, our schools here in Utah, but also uh keep leading our nation. And we're doing a really good job here. So that's exciting.
Hmm. Thank you. Thank you so much. And thanks for reading your thoughts and
Great, Kelly.
And also too, I know, um, with Member Beesinger, he is definitely a very present and uh articulate and thoughtful in terms of his comments. And so I think, um, Member Beesinger, just so you know, we, we, we want to honor that. That's why we're going to email it out. And so everybody can, and so we can read those uh directly. And I would just want to, I, I would love to echo um just everyone's comments and you know, I think when we, when we pull our sa- our hope, we pull ourselves out of the day-to-day, put ourselves in a different environment where we're deliberately trying to learn and grow and connect with others. It's when, when we're fully present, it's amazing what, what can take place in those spaces. And I know for me too, I found myself um, one, I, I find myself intrigued just by the charter school movement of what's happening across the United States because what's happening in Utah is so unique and uh, and different. And to my, my challenge point, so I find myself every time I'm, uh, well, every time, this is only my second time attending this conference, but both times, I also question closure. Uh, and coming back to that excellence comment, like that just what swirls and when I'm sitting in sessions, I think so much about that. Not that I've, um, that it's like the last thing that we want to do. Uh, it is just so interesting how it is very much a, a central and focal point for many other authorizers. It's just part of doing business. I mean, not like it's a flippant, but just part of the process where it is absent from our, really from, from the work that we do. So I very much appreciated being in sessions and, and around other leaders. Like, I found myself wanting to connect with other um board chairs or folks that are in those, in leadership positions that we connect with. Uh. I also so appreciate, I missed Maria, was not able to attend your session. I was on the plane, but I did catch Amy's and it and, and I, and again to echo what an honor it is to see that work, but that we're trying to be um proactive and trying to offer supportive services to the schools that we work with, with, with these organizations. Um, and so I just always, uh, saying the same thing to your point, Vice Chair, I just learned so much about these organizations more than I would not, than I would normally know than when we're, we're hearing them and having lunch or, or, or whatever it may be. Uh, I also too found uh incredible value uh attending sessions that talked about the political landscape or just the political dynamics in which we're all in and how, and I also attended a session about AI. Um, and how AI is helping authorizers do their work. Um. Maybe think about the trials piece in the beginning we were talking about in our meeting today of just AI is going to have this, I mean, already does, but just even s- 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 supercharged to be able to help us make these decisions. And, and how is AI impacting teaching and learning?
Hmm.
It didn't, the conference didn't necessarily go there so much, but it was more about AI helping in apps or, you know, just the, the technical work that we do to help streamline processes. So I found that interesting. And then the last And then the last thing I want to say too is that, um and you all know, because I say this, that the the quality time that we have together to be able to talk about things that we don't necessarily get to talk about, even in an hour lunch or just here, cannot, we cannot replicate that. I had an opportunity to connect with uh Utah schools in the future and which again, having, we wouldn't necessarily have had that kind of conversation potentially here, that then will open up opportunities for us to grow and do even more powerful work here in the state. So I I uh, I found that. So and even our members of our association that are there, like I just don't talk so we just don't have the time to engage in the conversations that are so beneficial to our work. Uh, so it was just wonderful in that sense. And I'm grateful that we've built this into our, into our into our, I don't know, I want to say practice, but just in, yeah, into the way that we engage in business. And I also want to say too, for um, for those of you that attended, thank you so much for taking time out of your life. For those of you that were not able to attend, we'll make sure that you get these other conference dates. So that way potentially you can pick one that might uh work for you in your schedule. We'd love for anyone and everyone um that is on our team to be able to attend. And I don't know, and and uh and definitely continue to present, right? Uh, uh, Marie and I are always trying to brainstorm of of, okay, what can we present at this conference? What can we share here? That it 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 elev, it's such a uh, it's a double whammy because we are able to elevate our work. Um, because we're sharing with others, but it also is a wonderful opportunity for us to realize our own greatness. Which is always good. So with that, uh, any other feedback or comments from?
Yes, small, um, it was also really fun now after NACSA um, to have a couple of different states that have reached out and then follow up and talk about so, that's been fun also to, I think that's also happened with Amy. Um, you know, just getting to continue conversations now post.
I, I love, I love that. Excellent. Great. All right, well. Um, I could definitely keep talking, but Evan's going to hold on. Uh, it is month thirty six and we are technically, um, we have concluded our business. And Oh, yes, but well, could I just make a comment on that? Okay, because I think that's in relation to so we all work, I think, Marie, you pointed this out, that we were, this report came in a little bit late. Uh, this, in in regards to strategic branding, what was that? Yes, and that's, that's about what you, you know what's about to come right now. So I'm about to assign us all a little homework. Uh, if you could take some time between uh now and our December meeting to read through this. Uh, what questions, Dean, have, comments, and really specifically, I want us to have some really targeted action strategies. And as we think about a strategic plan that's going to guide our work, and to Voice Chair, to your point, I just don't want it to sound like or to be a a strategic plan that that AI might have written, right? That maybe that we we really think about how do we make this one that is action oriented? That we can really achieve goals that that um move us forward in the work that we want to do. So if you could please, and um, did we, we get a digital copy of this as well? Yeah, so uh, we just take some time to review this and we'll build this in as an agenda item for us to discuss in December. And I, my hope is, is that we start not necessarily January, but come February, we have a real meaningful conversation and start, and really it's the crafting of a strategic plan that we can, we have one currently. And oh, if I, I'll add to that. So Marie is going to send out the uh the the board onboarding, onboarding packet book uh, in there is the current strategic plan. It'll be very, it's very easily accessible. So take a look at that in regards to the feedback that we've received. And then what do you, where where do you see room for growth? What do we want to keep? Uh, where, where do we see ourselves five, ten, fifteen years from now? The next twenty five, as that continues to come. Uh, I think this is an the, this is an incredible opportunity and a moment in time for us to lead out uh, in what we would like to see happen in the state. Okay, so Marie, thank you for, because we almost, you almost didn't have homework. So thank you, Marie, for bringing that to my attention. No, that's great. No, it's perfect. Uh, thank you so much. And uh great, I think that we're supposed to get snow this weekend, so please enjoy the next day of sixty degrees. And uh, yeah, for those of you that like to ski, I know that we're, I was like, yes, it's brilliant. Uh, but for those of us that want to be gallivanting in our shorts, I'm sorry, the times are coming to an end. Uh, so with that, we can, I think we, I, we can just conclude, um, because the meeting, um, the meeting will be adjourned because our business is concluded. So we are done for today, everyone. Thank you so much. And thanks for everyone online and for everyone being here today. It was a great meeting.